So welcome everybody from the call this meeting to order. If you'll stand with me. Library lost their flag, so we got little flag here on the podium. And we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I just want to say thank you for coming. And this is the regular business meeting for the Board of Commissioners, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. And we've called the order, we've done the pledge of allegiance. Next thing on the agenda is amendment slash approval of the agenda. So gentlemen, if there's a something you want to amend or move or...
I do have, I don't know that I need to amend the agenda at all. No, I can bring this up under the fire of the, that'll get into that, so I think we're good. Yeah, I think I'm good.
Okay, Jay?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, has been got a motion to approve the agenda? You have a further question? Hearing none, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. And again, I want to reemphasize, if you, the next thing on the agenda is public comment. So we have public comment cards on this podium. If you want to speak, you get three minutes. You can talk about anything you want. We're only gonna give Pat one minute. Pat Ross, no Pat. Anyway, that's, that's, that's just an old joke. So we're gonna start right now. If you want one, you know, we're, we got quite a few. And you don't have to speak if you don't want to, but you're sure welcome.
Before we have our first speaker, John, can I make a, just a public statement? I, I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. This was important to me that we, we had our last meeting in Brookings. And it was important to me to have a meeting here. And it just so happens we had a couple of topics that were very important to the community, so it was good timing. And we have the big fire, so I'll give you an update on that as well. I, one of the things that's really important to me is more community involvement, which is also why we're moving our meeting times to the evenings. So that it will make it more accessible to the folks that are working and can't make our daytime meetings. Historically, we've done those daytime meetings and I just, I've always felt from sitting where you are that we, we just, there's a disconnect there. So expect more of this. We will have future meetings here in Port Orford area as well. So it may not be here at the library, we may do them at City Hall. I did speaking with Mayor Cox quite a bit because of fires, so they, they're certainly willing to accommodate us. Anyway, I, again, thank you for coming and expect to see more of this.
So the first public comment is Brian Thompson. Hi, Brian. Yeah, come on up to the podium and...
Yes, please.
Am I supposed to...
No, I will do that. I will do that and you're good to go.
Red light goes off, beware.
Yeah, that's right. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for coming to Port Orford for this. My name is Ryan Thompson, small business owner, tree service here in Port Orford. Actively involved in the Parks Commission and coaching our youth. So, number one, I thought it was gonna be one of the ones. That's fine. Regarding the timber sale, we have, the city matched, well, not matched, but over, or committed to more than what the public has raised. We raised twenty-seven thousand dollars for a new playground here at Buffington Park. And the city then is chipping in to the total of a hundred and sixty-three thousand. And if there's any funds that either timber sale by Pacific or otherwise could be added, it'll just mean that much more awesome of a kid's playground right here at Buffington Park, Port Orford. And so just wanted to make you aware of that. So I don't know what monies are available or could be with that. And secondly, I know regarding the wind, that thankfully to, to the insight or the foresight of our fishermen, you know, we have protected grounds. And my understanding is, as far as Port Orford and around here, it's not even on the map. But just wanted to comment as thankful to those fishermen before us and, and even now of protecting our fishing grounds right here in Port Orford. So just wanted to comment on that and I think that's it.
And that's in reference, right, Brian, to the Boeheim?
The Boeheim thing, which my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is Port Orford is off that, that grid. Yeah, but I know the marine preserve had a lot to do with that. And so just props to our fishermen that realize what a fertile ground this is for, for the fish and fishery issues.
Well, you know, we got the, the thing we got right on the other side of the California border, that's a, that's a big reserve too. So I mean, that's a legitimate reason to have it.
Part of it doesn't make any sense to me is they, they're gonna, they want to send this electricity to California, if they want to put it on the Oregon post. That this federal government doesn't make any sense.
Real quick, I just want, on your, on your park project?
Yes.
So are you aware of the O P R D grants?
Oregon Public Recreation.
Oregon Parks and Recreation.
Oh.
I could actually, so, so mayor may not know, but cities are allowed to apply for this grant through O P R D. And, and what it does is it affords you to make improvements to your parks. And what's nice about it is it's a forty percent match. So if you've raised almost a hundred...
Hundred and sixty-three thousand is the commitment thus far.
Yeah, so if you have that, essentially you can add sixty percent to that. Well, actually it'd be more than that, it'd be a hundred and seven percent, because you'd be doubling it plus twenty percent to your park project. And I'm pretty adept, I've done those a few times.
Okay.
And so I would be...
I will reach out to you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So my thing, and most importantly, I did want to comment, thank you for the great communication on fire and for all the work that is going through that.
I should have warned you. Jay is a great resource, but he, he also tends to spew out those acronyms, so don't be afraid to ask him what they are.
I will email him and find out all about that.
Do you, do you know when your park project is planned?
I know the build time is about six months, and that's manufacturing build time, but it's still in the works. So we're probably looking at eight months to a year.
So if you could put it on a year, how it works is this, this, it'll be, it'll come open in February. The application to apply is in February. And then there's a couple of hoops to jump through in May. And then they make a decision in June on the award recipients. And because I'm assuming probably Port Orford hasn't put in, you're gonna be, you're gonna be scored really high for that. And then you would be able to, next fiscal year, you'd be able to start your project.
Perfect. Thank you, I'll be in touch.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a real quick clip. So I believe you three are commissioners, and I'm not sure who Jay is for that.
Jay is commissioner, I'm, I'm county council.
Oh, my apologies.
I'm, I'm nothing.
I apologize, because I should introduce this. So my far left is Ted Fitzgerald, our county council director of operations. Brad and Jay and I are all from Brookings, we're county commissioners. And yeah, it's just, it's a pleasure to be here. I spent a lot of time in Port Orford from eighty-two till twenty-twelve.
Well, I recognize...
Port Orford sixes, yeah.
And Jay, my apologies, I, I'm very sorry, I haven't paid attention.
So we all got our nameplates, it's little, and I know that older I get, the harder it is to see. So Richard Miller is next. So Richard, if you got a question, speak now or whoever holds, yeah.
I often wonder who that guy am too.
Okay, good evening. And I want to thank you for coming out here to Port Orford. It's nice to meet the leaders of the county on our own turf for once. I'm gonna address two issues, and I'll do them both within the three minutes in the lobby. And these are suggestions that we need to do going forward. One of them is reading on Facebook recently about all the hassle about the clear cut down here across from the high school. I did a little research on that and read a report by community development director Carolyn Johnson, also co-authored by the C A L Carter Schroder, that the property was to be used for passive recreation and conservation. And the board ordered a evaluation, an assessment of the value in that same report. Or actually, that's what was recommended. And decided it's to be limited to recreational use. I go by it today, and it's a disaster. They got all the slash all over the place. And it doesn't seem at all consistent with what the commission addressed or directed back in twenty-eighteen. So I think it's educational to follow up on that and see what's going on. The other thing is on the fire, the Amble Fire. I listened to the briefing last night. I listened to it on Facebook and I think it was informative. I think the county's in good order to be prepared for what's going on and for all that, and I'm sure we're all appreciative. But I think we need to take a deeper look at that. The fire started on August twenty-fifth, and it was almost like a backyard fire. In the three days, they did nothing. There was no resources assigned or anything. And that may be because of wilderness policy by the Congress, decision by the Forest Service. I don't know why that happened. When it was handed off to the management team from out of the area, it was a twenty-five acres. Now what do we have? Over, somewhere around ten thousand? I think we, we need to take a look at that and lean on Congress through your office, through the personal contact with our representative, who spoke last night, by the way. I'm sure you know that. And find out why they were so slow to respond. Is the policy ill-advised? That wilderness area is fine. Unfortunately, fires don't play by the rules. They go where the fire goes, through the forest and through the urban interface, which includes Port Orford and the residents out in the canyon. So I think we need to ask our representatives to readdress that, find out whether that's good policy, why we didn't hit that fire sooner, given the nature, obviously, what has happened. And see if we can avoid such a recurrence in the future. Prevention's aren't better than cure. Can I use up my three minutes?
No, you didn't tell ya.
Hey, thank you again for coming out here.
Richard, hold on a second. Let me, let me give you some, a few facts about the Amble Fire. I've been very involved in it from the, from the beginning because of my involvement on the flat fires. So C F P A did respond to that fire right away. Our, our Coos Forest Protective Agency did, did come out there. And we also shifted resources from the flat fire. What happened with that fire, why it grew so quickly, was we had a firefighter. I believe it was part of a hotshot crew that was engaged in trying to contain it. And my understanding is he fell from a very steep, he was up on top of, of something and he fell. He was seriously injured, he was down at the bottom of the ravine. And they had a, they had a couple of decisions that they had to make to get him out of it. And they could carry him out, which would have taken several hours and certainly impacted his condition. Or they could bring in a helicopter and lift him out. What happened is the only helicopter available to transport a person was a Coast Guard helicopter. So when that helicopter came in, the rotor wash from that helicopter spread that fire.
It's a different type of rotor than, than the one they use in forest firefighting, so it actually...
So the command staff on that fire, they, they decided the firefighter's, his injuries, his well-being was the most important thing at that moment, and they lifted him out. And they, and they, they, they were able to get him out there, get him out of the way. But by the time that helicopter got out of there, and these were pretty adverse conditions. You have the fire going, you have smoke issues, you have wind issues, the helicopter's trying to get that line down there, they're trying to get their rescue operator down there. So it took some time, and, and that rotor wash is what expanded that, that fire.
What date was that?
That was in the very beginning of the fire pit.
And that kind of got, that got it total.
And that's, that's, that's what created, that's what caused this fire to get bigger. And, and that was in the onset of the fire. C F P A, C F P A, if you guys are not familiar with Coos Forest Protective Agency, they have saved so many structures. They have saved so, so much property in our rural communities. They do an incredible job. They are partnered with the firefighting teams that we have brought in for all of our fires. It's, it's standard operating procedure with them. They're all local, local folks that, that are firefighters. And, and they played a pivotal part in this, in this firefighting community.
No, I have no criticism of what they've done. I think it's been a gentleman's job, and yeah, we don't appreciate it. My address was to the front end and how to handle the wilderness area of fires. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Joy May.
Hi, so my name is Joy, and I live here in Port Orford. I want to thank you all very much for coming up here today. We live in the northern part of the county, and you have no direct representation on the Board of County Commissioners. You can often feel unrepresented. And this is a great sign that we can be represented in the northern part of the county. So I would, my best idea would be that this is a, is a regular thing, not, not only here, but it rotates with Port Beethuvan and Brookings and up here to Port Orford. I think that would be a sign that, that you really are trying to hear the entire county. So I appreciate that very much, thank you. I also was looking through the packet and saw that the plans have changed about when agendas are going to come out.
Yes.
I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. That will make a big difference on people being able to lead the agenda and decide whether or not there's something that they need to come to a county commissioner meeting to comment on. So there you go, and I appreciate the rundown on the fire. My husband is a past law enforcement firefighter, and he's like, it was not a helicopter. But they had to do it. And I would just like to remind the audience, if you would like more representation of the northern part, there are county commissioner seats that will be coming up for a vote in twenty-twenty-four. So you might want to think about that. Although I appreciate your commitment and your work that you all do. Thank you.
Yes, you can file right now, or now, in March, March of twenty-twenty-four. So next thing on the agenda is another, Joy did talk, so Ashley Moore is next. I won't tell you how long I've known Ashley Moore and her dad and grandmother.
Only five or six years. How much time I have? Nope, you're good. Okay, so, hi, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Ashley Moore. I'm the captain with the volunteer fire department sixes. And C F P A, they do rock. They're awesome. They have very aggressive fire suppressing tactics, and they're some of the greatest firefighters I've worked with, I just had to say that. I'm also a high school volleyball coach, I own construction business, but I'm not here representing any of those entities right now. I came to this meeting representing just a citizen of North County. I really appreciate you guys being here. I appreciate Brad, who spent over an hour on the phone with me, answering all of my questions. One of my main concerns is the logging that has happened at the end of Airport Road, or rather, the beginning of Airport Road. When the trees started hitting the ground, I had over twenty phone calls of people not knowing, nobody knew what was going on up here. So we felt a little underrepresented, we felt definitely not heard. And I guess moving forward, because now it is just a complete disaster there. I mean, somebody else put it very well, that it is, it is carnage, is what it is. Every tree was dropped. There are going to be some repercussions to that. My main concern is those repercussions and what are, what is my representation, my representative's going to do with those concerns? So up in North County, we have this thing called gorse. And whenever you clear cut in North County, gorse tends to proliferate, so that's one, one issue. Another issue is as soon as those roads got punched in, and again, I was making phone calls, I still had no idea what was going on out there, is homeless encampments started. And this isn't a speech to down the homeless at all, but data does show that where the homeless are congregated, crime goes up. And Lord knows, the high school, which is in direct juxtaposition of that land, I mean, they've had their fair share of theft, burglary, break-ins, and don't want that to go up. The neighboring houses that still have trees standing, the roof system, we all know loggers, the roof system won't be able to handle the new wind load. You know, what's gonna happen when those fall onto their houses? And the list just kind of goes on and on. So my main concern is what's going to happen with that and if North County is gonna have any say in what happens to it? Because we didn't get a say in what happened to it thus far. But will we get a say in what happens to it going forward? Because we are concerned about the school, we are concerned about the gorse, and I mean, I, I hate how it looks, you know? But coming from a logging family, I don't hate logging. I hate that that is my property, that's his property, that's her property, that's, that's our property, and we had no say in it. And it just kind of happened, and we were all kind of get shell shocked when it started. So I think that's it.
And this is an agenda item that we will speak on in a little bit, because we just want to get through the public comments, but we will speak on. And it says right here, discussion, timber sale, airport property, airport road property, so we will, we will address that. And at that time, I'll even...
I wouldn't mind just clarifying one thing, though, because when you say that you felt underrepresented, I'd say that the current commission felt underrepresented too when they were made aware of it.
Right.
Because this was a done deal before I ever showed up or, or either one of these two guys. So, so this deal was done, and it was a bad deal, and it was a dumb idea. And the prospective use of it that, that the county had committed to was even dumber, in my, in my opinion. So I, I, I'm embarrassed to be associated with, with what happened. But I'll admit, I tried to, and I'm a little slippery, so I tried to get in there and cancel the permit. But it was already in place, and, and it is being, it was being administered by Coos County, not by Cooley County. So it was a really weird thing, I couldn't believe it. Rabia and I did what we could, but we couldn't, we couldn't get in the middle of it. And it's just, but at any rate, I will say that if I have anything to say with it, say about it, we will be, we will be replanning it. And but we're gonna have to control the gorse, like I said, it's a major, major deal.
There's money that goes into it.
Oh, yeah.
So the money that you guys actually got from it, to the money you have to spend to replant, keep the gorse out, keep the, you know, the homeless encampments out, keep the dumping out, I mean, did we really gain anything to count?
Well, it was, well, also, we traded it, we traded that thirty-five acres for, what, two-hundred acres of, of ground on Forest Lake? I mean, I, I just don't know when the dumbness stops.
Well, we'll get, we'll get into the, we'll, we'll do a full kind of brief for everybody when we get to that topic, historical information and, and future. But I, I do appreciate you calling, calling.
Yeah, I appreciate you talking to me. You're the only one who called me back.
Linda Tarr is next.
Hi, I want to thank you for coming to the North County. This is a really good move towards more transparent, good government. Basically, Ashley has said everything that I have to say. I would like to know how this happened and what the plan is now, because you do have a mess on your hands. And you have a lot of people who feel very upset about it. And we, we had no idea. And now we have no idea how this mess is gonna be dealt with. But gorse is coming, and this fire is enough to...
A little louder, Linda, please.
And this fire is enough to remind us of how dangerous gorse is to our homes and our, and our high schools. Thank you.
One of our elected officials from Cooley County, David Barnes, county treasurer.
I'll wait until later when it's elected official comment.
Okay.
During the win discussion, please, thank you.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's number six. Okay, next, last one, Jim Haley. Come on up, Kim.
Commissioners, Tim Haley, I'm here cleaning up a gorse mess right now. We've got about a hundred acres of the map right here, clearing up right now. I know there's a lot of concern about fires and all that, and I don't know all about it. You know, a fire break in front of the high school seems like a pretty good idea to me right now.
A little louder, please.
I said, I don't know about the, I don't know about the, the whole timber sale and all that, but I know a fire break's a pretty important thing right now. And they got feller bunchers up there creating fire trails around this city right now to try and stop the fire. And, you know, a, a fire break around the high school seems like a pretty good idea to me. So I appreciate you guys coming up here, and I'll be back in front of you then, I'm sure. Thank you.
So thank you for your public comments. Next on the, is the consent agenda. One motion to approve A through F.
Oh, no, to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
That motion is second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes, motion carries three to zero. All right, what you've all been looking for, five A is discussion on Airport Road property, timber sale, timber sale contract.
So, you want me to, when you go, go down?
So I, I put this on the agenda, obviously, there were some, after I spoke about this, there was some concern around the committee about it. And some of the concern that was being brought to my attention was that you folks didn't know about this, you didn't know what was happening. This, this was a decision that was made last year, summer, summer of last year. I recall it because I was on the budget committee then, I was not a commissioner then, Commissioner Trost was not a commissioner then. And I remember hearing, listening to the previous board commissioners' conversation about the property and what's gonna be done with it. And I recall there were, there were periods of time where public comment on it. And I remember there were board commissioner meetings regarding it, it was, it was on the agenda. But I don't remember anyone ever coming and speaking about it, but I do remember the opportunity being there. I also remember the conversation from a budget committee perspective, which was, the intent behind selling the property was this county's financial condition. And if you're not aware of this county's financial condition, it is not good. It is not good at all. We have two looming financial cliffs, says Commissioner Trostus, and said, I like that analogy because it's very accurate. The first financial cliff that we're going to face next summer is going to be our general fund deficit. And that general fund deficit is gonna be substantial. It's gonna be substantial based on the lack of property tax income that we have coming in. And it's gonna be substantial because of the cyber attack that we just went through and the costs associated with that cyber attack. As you know, we pay the second lowest property tax in the state of Oregon, of the thirty-six counties. And we have the second highest number of special districts in Oregon. So what that means is, when you pay your taxes, before the county of Cooley gets any of that money, it gets distributed out to the special districts. And then what's left after that goes into the general fund of the county. And that hasn't changed since, I can't remember what year, but it's been there a long time.
Yeah, it's been established actually for a long time.
And, and the intent, as I recall the conversation... And the intent, as I recall the conversation, Commissioner Herzog was actually here then, he can give it to you firsthand, but the intent, as I recall it, was to try to generate some revenue to help offset that, so we don't have to try to pass a levy, or we don't have to generate additional income for the general fund to fund law enforcement, to fund the sheriff, to fund county services that we provide, and that was the intent, as I remember it being discussed. Now, the next financial cliff that is a little further down the road is the road fund reserves, and that money is basically the county's savings account, which is used to leverage grants, it's also used to, the governor has allowed us to use that to pay for sheriff patrol costs. And that savings account came from back when this county was rich, from timber receipts. And when the spotted owl came, and we were no longer allowed to harvest timber, then we stopped generating that revenue. So the road fund reserves, and I know Treasurer Barnes is here, maybe he can help me with an accurate number, but I think it's around 28 million, somewhere around there, Dave? Twenty-eight million dollars, somewhere around there. But we keep pulling money out of that, we keep pulling money out of that to put towards our sheriff patrol, so we can maintain what I think is too low of a public safety that we have now, but we keep pulling money out of that to fund that, so.
So, Rooker, I just wanted to expand on what you just said.
Sure.
Just to provide a little bit of detail. So, the road funds are restrictive funds, so they're not necessarily, we're not able to use those funds to fund any aspect of the county. The governor did make concessions in like 2017-ish that allowed for the road funds to be utilized to help offset the cost of road patrol. So road patrol is the only thing outside of actually using it for roads that that money can be steered towards. So, you know, it's, when he talks about having the general fund financial cliff, that means basically, most, all of your other county services are going to be looking at some serious financial reductions in the future if we can't get something figured out. Now, those departments are, those are your juvenile department, your clerk, your assessor, your DA, your mandated departments. Building planning generally can operate a lot on a net zero budget because they use their permit, you know, costs and things of that nature to offset the cost of running that department. Parks is a net zero as well, parks funds itself, but we don't have a lot of those types of departments. Economic development is funded with the TLT tax, but only a portion of it. So when we talk about general fund, we're talking about the jail, the DA, the assessor, the clerk, the juvenile department, the mandated level type departments.
So this is the, probably, if I had to say, the primary reason I ran for office last year was this problem. I sat in the Budget Committee for five years, I chaired the Budget Committee, I watched our public safety impacted by a lack of funding, and I care very much about this public safety. You know, we shouldn't have to, we shouldn't have one deputy working by himself to cover this entire county. We should not have, we need more, we need more coverage. And I fear sometimes that we're going to have an incident that happens that's critical in South County, and we're going to have an incident that happens in North County, and we're not going to have people to cover that, and that's not acceptable in this day and age to me, and that's one of the reasons I ran for this office. So we are exploring every possible thing that we can to pinch every penny right now, but we're also exploring other options that may be some type of levy to fund law enforcement independently from the general fund, to free up money in the general fund so we can maintain county services, and yet provide the public safety element that we need to protect our people. So we are, we are working at that, we're surveying the community to see what, if anything, would be acceptable to this county in terms of funding law enforcement. So, anyway, I circle back to the intent behind this property and generating revenue from it. But I can also tell you that when I took office in the beginning of the year, County Council and Director of Operations Fitzgerald was already in place. Commissioner Trost was not here then, former Commissioner Boyce was here. When Commissioner Boyce left, Commissioner Trost was appointed in a courts position, and that was in probably April-ish?
Uh, no, that was in late February.
February, okay. That was in February. I can tell you that after I took office, I know Ted looked at this issue, and he can explain this in more detail, but I think contracts were signed, we couldn't undo this. The other, the other proposed thing that was in place was what to do with the property, and what was initially proposed was to take half of the property. Ted, is that right? Half of the property was going to be put towards a RV park for veterans.
It was part directly across from the high school.
And then the other part was going to be used by the road department for excess.
Waste disposal.
So, so that's not, that's not something that I support, it's not, I don't think it's a good.
Well, if there was a way to make everybody in this room mad, I could.
So I'm just being transparent with you guys. The, you know, I, talking with the veteran community, I don't believe that, there's no services here, it's across from a high school, there's, I understand the intent, the intent is definitely, it's well-intended, we certainly want to take care of our veterans, we certainly want to take care of our veteran community, but maybe there's better ways that we can do that. And then I, of course, using that area to put excess road whatever.
We do, we do need places to dump our stuff.
We do.
So if anybody would like to volunteer, we have yards and yards of limbs and root logs and stuff that we can bring to your house. But otherwise, we're just going to have to keep looking for our own place.
So.
But I don't think right on 101 is really the best idea.
So that is, that's kind of the history behind how that happened, and I was going to give Ted a chance, but go ahead, Jim.
Well, I want to expand on history, because I was, actually, I was involved before I made one here. So I used to be the juvenile director for Curry County, was your friend the juvenile director? Juvenile Department also runs parks. And so how this, how a lot of this originated was, there was a land inventory done, I think you had, you talked about that land inventory a while back in one of your comments, and actually it was done quite, there was a land use task force that was identified, and they took all of the county lands that had been foreclosed upon, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And there's a piece at Floris Lake, it was 500 acres, and it was, it's landlocked, so it's on the south, the south, the fingers of Floris Lake, so it's on that south end, kind of butts up the Blacklock Canyon. And so it was part of the original planned community out there, if you guys remember that? Okay, so it was part of that, and all of that was foreclosed upon when that community kind of fell, and that all came to the county. So, but it's landlocked by the cranberry farmers on one side, the lake on the other, and the state with the Blacklock Trail on the other side. And so there was some, you know, pushing around like, what are we going to do with this land? What are we going to do with this land? How's this land going to be purposeful for the community? So some of the things we're kicking around was like a paddling park, you know, you could paddle in from the boat launch at Floris Lake, and you could have an outdoor recreational park out there that you could only get to by paddle. There was a lot of other things, the logging came up with that piece. And the other reason we were talking about was potentially trading for state lands. And the one, the one that, when I was there, when I was the juvenile director that I was after, was McVeigh Park in South County, in Harbor, that the state didn't really want to deal with a lot, and it seemed like a good fit, that we could trade some of that, because they wanted to protect the Blacklock Trail. That was their goal. And so shortly after, so I ended up moving up to the county, but what I found out was that, so the original plan for that acreage, it was across from the high school, that the state had, their original plan for that was to create a rest area. That was, that was what that's original, that was in their master plan. And they, they, apparently, after I left and the McVeigh discussions kind of fell through, they continued discussions with the commission at the time, apparently, to trade the abandoned idea of a rest area to the county for that area to protect Blacklock. So, yeah, it didn't, it didn't seem like a good fit when it was proposed to me, it was actually brought to, even if somebody provided it to me when I was not with the county anymore as to what I thought, and it was not in the best interest of the county to do that. There was plenty of other properties that would have been more beneficial in terms of recreation, or use, or things of that nature, that would have been a better fit. Part of the thing about the state is, they can't just surrender land without going through an entire big process, but they can trade it. And so that was apparently what was worked out. Now, you'd made mention about having a voice in what it can become, and I think, I think that's where we now have to start the conversation. Right? So, I mean, Brett and I, we can say, Ted, you know, we weren't here when that decision was made, and things of that nature, so we can't really talk to that, but that doesn't mean that we're, we're not responsible for it as now, right? We've inherited everything that's been going on.
Hundred percent.
And that's part of what we do, that's what we're doing. And so I think there's an opportunity now with a kind of a new board to make discussions around what that looks like in the future. I mean, and I wouldn't limit your, the ideas, green spaces, park, BMX pump track, whatever, right? Don't limit the ideas around what you may come up with as a community, if you feel fits the best. There are some attributes, it is right across from the high school, how can we enhance that? How can that, you know, how can it become part of Pacific in terms of a use, right? What can all those things look like? Is it, you know, a wiffle ball field? Who knows, right? Just, what I'm saying, though, is that don't, don't, don't think about, when you come together and you talk about those things, really, you know, take it with a blank slate, a brand new piece of paper, as to what that could turn into going forward. Okay?
We can't change the past, but we can definitely affect what happens in the future. And something that I will take responsibility for, is something I discussed with Ashley, and that is that I recall there was an open period for people to talk about this, I recalled the issue, I was familiar with it, I stayed up with as many things as I could last year when I was anticipating taking the responsibility of this position. One of the things that I could have certainly done a better job in was to anticipate that some of you folks didn't know this was going to happen, and I could have been more proactive in letting you know. And I certainly take that responsibility seriously, and I apologize for that. I wish I, I wish I could have anticipated and not assumed that you didn't make the comments back then, so it wasn't a point of concern today, and I certainly accept that responsibility.
I think we had one person from North County, that was Tim Palmer, Tim the man, came and spoke against it. So, you know, I can't say I wasn't here last year when this was decided, I can't say I wasn't on the board of commissioners when they made the swap with the state for 90 acres, or 100, right at the 100 to 90 acre, on the lake, for this 50 acre parcel, 45 or so, 42 on one side, on the south side of the highway, Airport Road, and then seven acres on the other side. And we discussed this as a board in 20, 2022, in July of 20, July 20th, 2022, about making a RV park. We, you know, the topic last year was very much housing, and, you know, that topic is still a hot button. And at that time, we were, you know, it's easy to say trash, you know, we're going to make that place a place for, you know, and, but it was going to be a staging area for the county road department. And it doesn't have to be, obviously, because we have three new members of the board, or two new members of the board, and we will make a decision based on what you folks want. And so this is a kind of, let's just, I'm going to open it up, questions, if you've got something, you don't have to get up there, you can just talk. Yeah, Lynda?
How much money did you get for this?
We got the contract right here.
I think it's going to, we're going to clear, I want to say around 200?
Thousand?
A little bit more than that, too, a little bit more than that.
Is that after Coos County's paid and all the loggers were paid?
Yeah, but, but, but I mean, like you said, you know, then you got site prep, and you got, you have, that money, I mean.
At least half of it's gone.
Well, at least half of that, and I mean, it's dealing with gorse in a timber environment. My, my initial reaction as a person who's been involved in the timber business a lot would be to immediately replant it and get coverage out of it, but I've never owned, I've never owned ground that's subject to gorse, so I've represented people then, have, and I know that it's hugely expensive, and I know that it's a giant process, and the quicker you can, my, I could be wrong in this, but my thought is the quicker you get coverage, like get conifers on top of it, so you can limit the amount of area that's subject to getting taken over by gorse, that would seem like it would make sense, but like when I drive up, I see people have been trying that over the years, I don't know how well it's worked. I don't, it's, it's a, I guess, I mean, the idea was to, I understand where the commissioners last year were trying to make a, you know, do something good out of a situation that should never have been, but it just was a bad, it was a bad swap. And, and if the, if the state of Oregon's going to build a rest area, they should have just built a rest area, but they decided they didn't want to do that, and it was State Parks, wasn't it? Okay, well, they're a wonderful group.
Hey, we're going to try to get this guy a better park.
Sorry.
Be careful.
Well, at any rate, I, it's, you know, that, that didn't do, didn't do the county any good, and it didn't do the locality any good either. But I would think that, I mean, now that we have done that, there's, so there's wet limbs on the south side, there's a lot, there's a lot going on with that property, that it's not good site ground for trees, is the thing. I mean, if you look at the trees, they're, they're, at least on the north side, those are, we kept those things down, a lot of those are going to the mill free, because they're, I mean, they're not paying for them, there's too much defect in it. So you, you look at that, and you just wish that, that that could be something we had avoided, but yeah, let's think about, I mean, let's think about something that would, that we could do, or, I mean, now, I, I don't know that it does the county any good to own that. I don't, I mean, is there somebody else that we could, could we get rid of it? I don't, I don't know. It's just, I mean, it's a big liability, and then.
Let's dump the whole thing and then give it to somebody else.
Well, I mean, but the thing is, I mean, I didn't know, you know, I didn't make that deal, but I, but I don't want to have to, I'm not, I'm not bound to take the county further into bankruptcy by, 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 you know, doubling down on a bad idea. So sometimes you have to say, yeah, that was a mistake. In this rare event, I can say, I didn't make it. But, but I, but I will say, you know, for example, when I was the port manager in Brookings, have you ever seen that big green building? The big green building they finally tore down after 20 years? They borrowed 2 million dollars to build it, and they could never figure out what to do with it, or how to finish it, because they needed another million bucks. And so for 10 years, I told them that you should tear it down. And they said, well, we want to make it into an art studio, or something, and everybody wanted to have a, we could always, it always came down that we needed a whole lot more money to make it into a thing that it was never designed to be. And when you're trying to, when you're trying to repurpose something that it was, that's not, that wasn't made to do that, it's very expensive, and, and usually you end up with something you don't want. something you don't want. Well, I left in twenty sixteen, and I believe it was twenty nineteen, they tore it down. And now it's boat storage, but at least, at least it's, at least you can, you can get five hundred bucks a month as opposed to paying debt service on two million for the rest of, of history. So, that's what I mean, as we look at that, we could, we can, we should definitely look at whatever, if there's a way to make it good for the community, that's great. But at the same time, I think these, I think Brad, especially as, as described our financial condition, we're not, we're not in a condition to be out, to be out, you know, doing major improvements. So, if, if there's an organization that would want to take it, we, I think that would be something that we should look at.
Questions?
Yeah, I, well, first off, I would like to hear which organization, because that would probably be a for-profit place, and again, in juxtaposition of the high school, I'm not too jazzed about that idea.
I would, my suggestion initially would be the high school.
So, my idea, whether you guys are tired of listening to me talk or not, my idea is it needs to be replanted, the gorse mitigation has to happen, and it has to happen from the money that you guys got from it, that our county got from it, right?
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with that.
Like that, to me, you guys got to run for it, like part of that money needs to go to.
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that I'm recommending that we just take the cream off and run. I'm saying, I'm saying that I don't want to compound the problem. I don't want to, I don't want to then create something that the county's going to have to finance, but I agree, you know, when you, when you're looking at, whenever you do a timber job, you get your gross receipts, but, but, but you also have to set aside the site prep and the, and the, you know, and the rehab, and, and to get all the planning done, and, and the years of, of getting that up to free grow. So, that's a big chunk that has to sit, and, and you look at that, I don't know, could be that whole chunk of money by the time we get it done.
Today, at the end of the day, it's just important that we don't go ready, fire and, right, that it's well thought out, that we do this thing you're talking about, that we make sure that we're, we make a measured response, you know, and an interesting thing about government land, so, we're really pretty much prohibited from selling it, I mean, for the most part, because if you sell a piece of county land, for instance, the county would only retain six percent of that sale, so it actually costs the county more, and the reason why is because it has to go to every special district for the pack, right? So it has to be dispersed, just like your tax dollars are, right? Unless it's designated parks in which then it can be, you know, utilizing, and, and kind of utilizing in a different fashion, but regardless, but if it was an opportunity for, you know, for Pacific High School potentially, right, to look at needs that they may have in the future, et cetera, like, you know, maybe a vogue shop that goes in on one part of that, any green space, the rest, who knows, but something of that. So it would make, it would make a lot more sense not to sell it to a private entity, but to transfer it to a public one, if it was to be good.
How many kids in the high school right now? How many kids are there?
Oh, gosh.
Fifty-seven.
Okay, nice, thank you. Volleyball coach.
Fifty-seven kids in the high school.
That's a green trinket.
It is.
Yeah.
It's increasing. There are more children coming up through Driftwood, larger classes.
Do your kids now take more land?
No, 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 that's just, we're just, like, this is ideas, right? It's just, it's just idea sharing right now, and so, yeah.
There used to be a lot of talk about moving Driftwood, moving the grade school and middle school up to the same property as the high school, is that something?
That would be up to the district, that, that would be out of our curricula.
I think the high school right now has like a hundred and fifty acres that, that, their property they sit on, right? Don't quote me, but it's right at a hundred and fifty.
What's the zoning of?
Or timber.
I think it's oyster grazing.
Oyster grazing.
Could you convert it to housing anyways?
Well, I mean, you could, you could do a zone change, but I, you know, that's.
That doesn't happen for a young.
I know.
But there is housing on Airport Road.
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
I really like the idea of the, of the high school, and as far as the transferring of the land, you know, or at least the high school use of the land, maybe an area where the students could be engaged in rejuvenating that forest and replanting and caring for that forest and trying to get it back to what it was before it was logged. That, to me, that sounds, or seems like, and I live in the area, I'm a half mile away from, from the high school, you know, it was devastating to see that forest go, and I'd sure like to see it come back. It may take forty, fifty years, but that's the big goals.
Are there any future farmers at the high school, and maybe a cranberry farm?
Yes, they have a very, they have a very well organized plant, plant biology, animal husbandry programs, things like that, so that, that would fit in perfectly with those programs.
Doesn't the high school have some bogs on the north side?
They started filling the bogs in.
Yeah.
I don't think they do the crabberries anymore. They're focusing more on throwing out the things.
Like the barn falls.
Okay, we got, Brian?
Sure, I, I know in, in hearing about the land swap years ago, that the big concern was the lake property and those fingers that, to protect, and, and that's when I think some of that trading was happening, was to ensure that there was around forest lake that, that kind of safety barrier, and correct me if I'm wrong in that. And number two, we do have a famous mountain bike trail builder that has helped with a very successful whiskey runs, mountain bike trails, and many of the trails in the area that live right here in Port Orford, so BMX or mountain bike, et cetera, that, that it wouldn't be outside of a possible.
Luke, you got a question?
I was just curious, when you said road department, are you referring to county road or?
County shop, county road.
So, it being county, isn't there a large county road facility just up there?
I think it's called County Shop Road.
At the end, the County Shop Road on the left, we do have, you know, we've got some travel storage, and, yeah, years ago, there was actually three separate county road departments, you know, and we've located that all now in Hunter Creek, but, and go out from there, but.
Should we just be expanding?
Yeah.
The original idea.
Is there any spot that they don't use?
Lynda?
I have a suggestion. So if you want to use this plan for, say, a mountain bike trail or BMX trail, which seems like one of the best possibilities, you will need matching funds to be able to get one of the recreation grants for that, and also you need to commit to keeping gorse out of there, replanting in a suitable way, can you commit to, to saving the money, whatever you're going to get out of this, your net, for doing the right thing on this property? Could you make a resolution tonight to say, we aren't just going to have this money disappear into the general fund, I understand your problems and I'm sympathetic with them, I'm all for a tax increase, okay? We need to pay more taxes if we want more services, but for this property that now is a liability, I think you should earmark the funds that have come for it, from it to fixing the problem and building something good with it.
We definitely can make a resolution or a motion tonight to do, you know, the right thing as far as.
Dedicating the funds.
Dedicating funds to restore this property. I, I drove up there, I came up a little bit early and drove around by the fire and drove around by the property, and I drove right past where Bobby Sweet, third, got right, you know, just south of us, on the other side of the road, the east side. Actually, you can probably tell me where I didn't get out, so I don't know, does he have a, I know he's probably replanted, but is there a gorse?
He hasn't, he hasn't replanted, and I haven't seen any gorse pop up yet, but I think it ju, I heard that it sold, but it, it, it did so? So, somebody just bought it, who knows what they're going to do with it?
He's a dairy farmer and granddad.
Oh, so I guess there is a preparation.
But we could definitely, as a board, make a, you know, a motion in a second and, and pass it, that we will, and I'll entertain that right now, so.
Wait, I mean, I, look, I want to, I want to take my time and look at what we're going to hear, we haven't even finished, so I would be, I, I'm not going to, I would not recommend that we dedicate all funds, make.
Not all funds.
I mean, why don't, why don't you, why don't you, why don't you guys tell the public that you're going to exercise your fiduciary duty as commissioners to, to, to protect and safeguard all county property, including this, which is what we're doing? So, I, it's, it's out of bounds to say we're going to, we're going to be, because it, you know, the reality is it could cost less, depending on if we, if we come up with a better way of handling it, or it could cost more. So, why don't you just let them do their job, and, and if you don't like it, then you can vote them out.
Well, can I say something?
Sure.
And, and this is why this issue was such a critical issue for North County. This same group that voted this in and with whatever advertisement for their meetings down in Gold Beach, even though it was affecting North County, we had this last year too, and the new ordinance that affected our UGB more than anybody else in the county, okay? When those new ordinances came through secretly and then bam, they were just thrown in our faces, there was one meeting, and then there was a vote. Even though I was told it needed to go on till the study was done, which should have been around this time, according to the plan that I saw for the studies that you, the county was paying to have done, but they counted, voted on that deal very quickly, and we were nobody, and up north here, we're to talk to, in fact, Ms. Crocker came up here and talked to our city councillor, council, and she even admitted she never talked to one person in North County the whole time she was doing her planning for that new ordinance. So, we have kind of a background of being left out of the picture, and this is wonderful that you're here, and I appreciate it, and thank you so much, but we need to continue this discourse, we're, we're part of the county as well.
I, I just want to say that I'm aware of that, and, but I would like you guys to, to be aware that there are other parts of the county that have been excluded as well. So, it's, I really think that's why the, the idea of moving, having the meetings up and down the county, and, and having the commissioners commit to, if there's an issue that is, that is localized in nature, we don't, we don't just, we don't just, I mean, we, we come to where the action is, and we, and we, and we promote, we promote it, and then, you know, there's a, there, if, if you want to sneak stuff through, there are ways to do it, and it's been done, and so what we're, you know, these guys aren't doing it, but it's, it's.
I know.
But, so, I would, the way that you avoid that is that you, is that you, you continue to elect people that are, that, and, and demand that those people are, you know, engaged with you guys as, as voters, but it's a challenge, because, you know, I mean, historically, historically, county government has all been centered in Gold Beach, and, and, you know, you guys, let's face it, there aren't very many of you up here, you know, the, the reality is that the vast majority of the population is in Brookings, and, and I think that that representation has been unfair to, to the majority of, of the population of Curry County over, at least since I've been here, which is, I moved here when I was six, and my dad was a county commissioner, and it was, it was a problem, they, you know, he was told he couldn't run for county commissioner because he wasn't from Brookings, Port Orford, or Gold Beach, he was from Curritown.
There was also a time when there were three commissioners from Port Orford, John Mayha, I think it was Bupington.
There was. The old guy, oh, who's, who's been around here forever, anyway, there were three, yeah, all three, you know, so, I grew up in Brookings, and we were all the same size back then, and I, I graduated in nineteen seventy-five, Brookings, Gold Beach, Port Orford, we were all in the same league, Sunset Six, and the times have changed, and, you know, the, the company that is logging that property right now, CLR, that's Carol, Larry, and Ron Fowler, South Coast Lumber, is the only reason Brookings has got a lot of people, basically, I mean, not the only reason, but it's one of the big ones.
But, I mean, just to get back to your question, Lynda, I think the important thing here is to listen and not, I guess what I was saying earlier, not ready, firing, right? No, because that's, I'm assuming how we may have gotten into this situation, right? Making a, an emotional decision in a situation that needs thought, right? And so, what I can say is that this, 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 these decisions won't be, won't go unnotified, they won't have the opportunity, like, I, I would feel certain that when it's time to make this decision, that, you know, we can look, commit to making this a Port Orford meeting again, right?
Thank you.
Right, so, I mean, we plan on being up here in the future.
Well, it's probably going to be several meetings, because it's going to be, I mean, that's my point, is we have to.
But I'm saying.
We have to rehabilitate it, we have to get it, we have to get a scope of that, and then, and then people can start thinking about, about uses.
There's going to be a lot of discussion, and there's going to be a lot of discussion outside of these meetings about what this looks like, and, but, when it's time to make that decision, you're right, what I would ask is, is have a lot of these conversations prior to that, that day, right? Because a lot of times when you're coming in to make that decision, you're going to hear the concerns, but hopefully, you've had some opportunity to really digest what's going on to make the correct decision when that is being asked, right? So, during the process, I would, I would ask that, that you stay as involved as, as this group is today. Does that make sense?
It does, but I do know how, how much matching funds are required to be able to do anything with developing a property, and I do know how much in need the property, the county is.
Yeah.
And I can see that money disappearing, and then.
Well, yeah, so, so there's a couple of caveats to what you just said, though, so one of, one of the reasons that we would have a hard time committing to that right now is, is in how a lot of the general fund works, right? So this doesn't go into a reserve fund, because it was utilized, it will, it will, when it comes into the county, most likely, if you're here, but it will go into the general ledger, now it can be earmarked, but what happens is, is each fiscal year, we have to, to, we have to dedicate those funds to, to something. Now, like Ted said, initially, it's going to be the mitigation piece and potentially replanting of, of using the money towards that, but what it becomes later may not be even in the next fiscal year. And so, you're right, so one of the, if it was to be essentially state and county land, one of the, one of the advantageous things about designating it park is, as I mentioned to Brian, in the cities, OPRD does a forty, you have a forty percent match to, to the grants, and they pay for sixty percent of the project. In the counties, it's a twenty-five percent match, and they pay for seventy-five percent of the project. So, it changes the scope a little bit on what you can do. So those are all things that we need to keep in consideration when we look forward on what this project is going to look like, in my opinion.
And I don't know how many of you remember the wall, so I, I was here when the wall at Battle Rock Park was. And it's hard, especially in a little community, to everybody's degree, if we all came up with something right now, would there probably be ten or fifteen different ideas on what to do with that property? And so, and, and, you know, Port Orford is no different than anybody else, it's, we're going to make a decision that will hopefully benefit everybody in North County. Yes, ma'am?
So that's to a point that concerns me. It's beyond my imagination to believe that we would call another, or you would have another VOC meeting in Port Orford, and on that night, make the decision about what will happen with that.
Yeah.
That, I don't see that. So, you know, I know there's history here, I know there, there are buildings up in the state with name, but my knowledge, and I'll admit to, I'm not an expert on this one, and I'm not an old timer, but it seems there was, there was a study done and a recommendation not to log this, and, and yet, the county commissioners made the decision to log it. So, I would like to move forward from here and, and ask you all, what's the best way for people to give you their ideas to keep abreast of what's happening with the land and with recreation? I don't think we can count on everybody delving into the west side of the county and checking every time to make sure that that particular VOC union is not going to be dealing with this issue, or that it is going to be dealing with this.
Very good question. So one way is you can, you can request to be on the. So, one way is you can, um, you can request to be on the mailing list?
Yes.
Right, so you can get notified of every single agenda item that's going to be coming forward? That's one way to self-inform. Um, you know, it's, it's obviously hard for us to speak with twenty-three thousand people individually, so.
Absolutely.
There has to be some mechanisms, right, in place to get that information out. Um, but, I mean, I will say to your point on, on about, you know, when we, we come up, when we made this decision to come up here, um, every single, every single discussion action item directly has to do with Port Orford. Right? So, it's not out of the scope to look at doing that.
But, but it, it is, it, it is historically out of the scope. So, I mean, I, I think, I think, I guess my, my point is that these guys came up here, that they were made aware of a problem and they came up here. Now, so, who was it that said that there's some opportu, some openings coming up for, to run against them? That was you! Okay. So, anyway, these are the guys that showed up. And let's see if they keep showing up.
Yeah.
And that's how the, that's how the, that's how the American democratic process works, or it's supposed to. And, and, you know, local government, this is, this is how it's supposed to be. You're supposed to come to these town halls and you're supposed to have this exact kind of Gold Beach meeting. This is how it's supposed to work. And it's not supposed to work where the people are autographically sitting. I mean, I'm very impressed with the way this meeting's going. Because this is how, in my experience, my most successful meetings have been, this back and forth with, and you can actually work through issues. But, but both sides have to trust each other at the same time. And so, you know, I mean, in, in this case, they're not your enemies. They're, they made, they were made aware of a problem and they want to remedy it too. And, you know, as we go forward, you know, the budget process, Brad, Brad was the chairman of the budget committee for the last couple of years, so he's, he's been.
So, that's why we're in.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, he's been the one who has to, who has to make recommendations that are adverse to, to numerous different groups and individuals that have a special, like, like, for example, you know, we, we heard about, we heard about Buffington Park today, tonight, right? Well, so, that's actually not how the county's supposed to work. I know that that's how it has historically worked, but it is not a bank for, for special interests. What it is, is it's a, it's a vehicle to, to aid in, in securing funds, right? But, again, to tell you my first, and I mean, no disrespect to Buffington Park, I get it that we're trying to fix the thing. My first few meetings at the county, I, I would be sitting here and people would stand up and say, hey, by the way, if you got an extra couple hundred thousand dollars, could you give it to our special district? Cause we, um, we don't like to charge high fees, cause our customers don't like it. Oh, okay. I mean, that seems to be how things have been going. But that's why, it's one of the big reasons why the county has very little money. So, so we have to, you know, unfortunately, I, that's why Brad got quiet when we're talking about, we're talking about where that money, you know, the money in the, in the, that is being, you know, that's coming off of the logging, right? Well, I'm sure he's having like a Vietnam flashback where he's thinking that he's going to be out there next year and they're going to be saying, they're going to be, they're going to be like, look, we're even going to have to, that's, that's one deputy. That, that, you know, one and a half deputies, right? And if you don't give us that money, then that's it. Port Orford doesn't get coverage or we're Langloes, or everybody in Langloes is killed by the, uh, by the walking dead or whatever's going to happen next. So, he's, he's, he's worried about that. But I can say that as a person who's, you know, the director of county operations, I, I am also going to intervene and say that, you know, we have, we actually, we, we have a, we have a duty to, we can't just strip the property and leave it. And, and, I mean, it's not in anybody's best interest, but at least of all these elected officials, because they want to work, you know, we want to, we want to have a good outcome. And then there, there's so many different, I don't want to be rushed in anything, because there's so many different op, op, opportunities, like I'm just sitting here thinking. Okay, so we don't transfer the property, but we, but we turn it over, we, we lease it to the school, for example. And, and we do some kind of, you know, like a demonstration forest, um, that, that sort of thing. You got wetlands down there, I mean, but when I was a kid, we had this little, this little swamp right out behind Calmyopsis. And, I mean, that's where I spent, I was until I was like, a kind of delayed adolescent, so I was there for it. But, there's so many good things that could be done with that. And I think we should just look at it and, and I know that, you know, all logging looks like devastation when it happens and has to be cleaned up. I haven't seen, I, I was surprised that, that, the only thing that I know about that logging company, because I had nothing to do with hiring him, is that it's a logging salvage company. So, I don't even know exactly what that is, but, but I, we're going to go make sure that it gets cleaned up and that it, that we're, that we're in accordance with forest practices. We go, you know, we're subject to all the same rules as everybody else. And luckily, I'm, I'm in the role of the landowner, not the, not the logger, so I can be like, you know, that, that horrible person from California who says, you're going to use this, you do it just the way I say. We'll do that. That's how, we're the landowner. And we, it, we, they won't be able to walk away and, uh, and, and abandon it. It will be cleaned up, it'll, the stuff will be disposed of. That's what happens.
So, I, I just like to kind of get back to.
I was just going to say that the lady right in front of you had her hand up prior and I just.
That's, yeah, I was going to say that she needs, she's had her hand up several times.
That was a long time ago.
I apologize.
I think like, it's probably been, been answered by now, but.
You're, you're next.
Okay, I'm Joy Wolf. And, um, I, you know, I really appreciated you letting everybody ask questions. It's, it's probably out of the norm for a meeting like this. Um, but I, I was wondering, um, how, how the decision-making goes? I mean, do you got, do you, or would you consider having a couple of people who are, uh, of course, experts in their field from different walks of life and perspectives and so on, giving their information? I mean, I think that's what we're doing now, but when it's all said and done and you've heard all of our, um, comments, is it just between the four of you to make this decision?
Three, three.
Or like three? And, um, or do you bring other people in as voters or something, you know? Because, no offense at all, but this might not be your specialty, I don't know. Or it might be. But, but bring more, you know, folks in that have a wide, a wide range of interests that can really speak to this. I don't know if I'm off the mark here.
Like a task force or?
Something like that, yeah.
Jake, you know, ma'am?
Go ahead, Jake. I'm working good, I'll, I'll do this.
So, 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 to answer your, to answer your question, so, so, so yes, um, you know, uh, will we often, if we had to default to each other for the best answer of every decision that's been made? Well, I think it'd kind of be any better position right now. But it, it'd be a rough go, right? So, yeah, so we do often rely on all kinds of input professionals, um, um, and just interested parties.
I mean, one of the comments that this gentleman just said is, you know, I'm the property owner, so I can be this way. But, I mean, it's sort of owned by all of us.
No, when I say, I, when I say that, I say, since I'm the director of county operations, we're, this is the county. The county owns it. But the county didn't do the work on it.
Yeah.
The county, the county had, the county contracted all of that stuff out, so it puts us in a unique position. Cause normally, we'd be saying, whoa, I'm sorry, uh, the road department did this and, uh, we're, uh, it was a mistake.
I'm wanting to feel just a little bit, um, you know, relieved that when you make a decision, it's, it's really grounded in enough of our feelings and.
Well, I, I think, I actually think, I mean, I think, you know, there's, there's community input. And then there's, and then there's science and there's the reality of, of, of real property management. And, and so, those are the things we're going to be looking, looking at. But that's, I mean, you know, when, when you say, for example, that, that you're, that just want, he wants those trees to be back the way they were. Well, maybe that's, maybe, maybe that's the way to go. I, I don't think that's a good idea, because the trees that were grown there aren't the right, aren't the right trees for that site.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
And so, I, I know a lot, I have nine hundred acres of timber ground myself. I, I've managed, I've managed nine thousand acres.
That's, that's my question, I don't know what your backgrounds are.
I'm, I'm not a forester, but you know what I do at higher foresters? And I ask them, and I ask them, and what we can do if we decide to go that route, then, then we, then we'll find out what grows there. Right now, there's a mix, there's, I know, I know that there's a bunch of, there's red cedar that was growing in there, but it was getting, it was getting stolen, it was getting logged by people on four-wheelers for the last couple of years. Another reason for, you know, and this is a problem with a lot of the timber ground around here. You have to, you, it's, it's, it's a, there's, there's different, different people that are, that are coming in and, and, uh, and, you know, taking stuff, taking resources off the ground. So, that's another, you know, that's the thing that we have to think about, that, that the county's not set up to safeguard that, that kind of, you know, it's, the way we're going right now, we, we shouldn't be in that business, because we don't have people, we have, we have a lot of people that only like to work four days a week right now. So, so, there's three days, nothing's happening.
Linda's saying it's a, it's a liability.
Right, well, that's, that's what I mean. We, so we have to, we have to figure out, we have to figure out a use where, where the ground, where the ground's going to be, going to be safeguarded in some way. That's why I was like, I was thinking to myself, you get a decent to the school and you have a use where people were on the ground, that's the best way to, that's the best way to make, if, if, if there are activities going on there, that, that would be a great way to safeguard it. But, but, you know, right now, I mean, it is right across from high school and there was all this theft going on, you know, for the last couple of years. And I don't know, I, I don't, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a big issue. How do we, how do we deal with that? And so, as we look, those are all issues that we, that we need to take into account as we do, as we do rehabilitate that background. Now, look, I would have loved it if it didn't get logged, okay? I would have been happy with those ugly old defective fir trees on the north side of the road. Um, they would have stayed up forever. And yes, you got a point. Now, that those trees are down, that's going to change the wind pattern, there are things that are going to happen. And it's not, not all going to be good. Not all going to be bad either, because a lot of times, I know this is a shock to people, but when a tree is gone, sometimes you'll miss it. But, um, but they grow back. Anyway, but I don't know if that's what we want to do there. I don't, I don't know. So, we'll look at it and we'll, and we'll make, we'll make the best decision and it'll include everybody's input. And, but I think we want to, we want to focus on, on getting that, you know, moving it down the road as quickly as possible.
Okay, got a question, right? This little lady, that's right behind you.
Okay, well, we all want to get everybody's input for some out-of-the-box idea of developing this property on Airport Road, but the reality is the people that live on Airport Road are the people that will be dealing with the consequences of whatever decision is made. And our input needs to be very impactful, because this is our backyard. And maybe we didn't sign on to live next to some RV park complex development nest. We signed on to live a quiet life in a wooded area, a peaceful area. Maybe we don't want some bizarre thing stuck out there in our, in our, in our little backyard.
I kind of assumed you didn't.
You actually got a little bit of a mess that's wor, looks worse than our property right now, the county property. I, I drove down Airport Road today and I was like, wow, that's.
We need to, I mean, the decision needs to be very respectful of the people that live on that road, because we're going to be dealing with it. And the rest of the community really is us. If not, everybody in the community is us.
So, Dave had his hand up next.
Commissioners, this, it sounds like there's enough interest in this room that maybe form a committee of, of six to have notice meetings that they hold up here. And that way it gives the people in the community an opportunity to come out, talk to six of their representatives. And then the next time you guys come up here, that group has a plan that they submit to you that's been, that you don't have to be involved in, but, you know, form a, a committee. We have a housing committee, we've had, we have other committees in the county. It seems like there's enough interest in this one, but this might warrant having its own little committee.
Good idea.
Not too big, because you don't want to get unwieldy, five, six people. And, but to have notice meetings and give everybody an opportunity to come out and speak their piece.
Wait, you're having notice meetings for the six, six, eight-person group?
Excuse me?
You're having, what would you have notice meetings for the, I don't understand how that would work.
The, the six people who were on this group, like the housing committee was, we had notice meetings that every, the third Thursday of every month, we were going to have a meeting. And people could, and the public could come out to that meeting. Nobody ever did, but we, like any other gr, like any other group.
I just feel like it would be more effective if, if you guys just were here dealing with the issue. It's your responsibility. And you should have meetings up here on a regular basis, especially till we get this resolved. I think that's not too much to ask. But I, but I, I will tell you that, that when you start forming committees, all of a sudden you find people with, with unique special interests on those committees. And I, I don't, I, I, I've found that there have been a lot of committees formed in this county. When I got here, there are a lot of standing committees that aren't populated. And, um, they, I, I don't think it's a good idea. I think, I think, I think you guys should do your job.
Just to point out, there's only, the commission only has four meetings a month, or two meetings a month, actually, and two workshops. And, you know, to, I know the workload, I know the agenda that you guys are facing every, every week when you have a meeting. And it's just, you know, if somebody can do, I just think that if somebody can do legwork for you and come back with a semi-finished product, it, it might help you guys. I do understand what Ted is saying though about the, the problem with committees. I've been on enough that haven't been listened to when they did come up with something. So, it, I am very hesitant about it, but.
I think, I think in theory, um, it, it could be a very good thing. I think what needs to happen first is there has to be some, some, some actual identified structure into what this looks like in the future. Um, and not expect, uh, a six-person committee to, to just, you know, because you could say, well, we're going to create Disneyland. And it's like, okay, we can't, we can't, we can't afford that, right? So, like, you know, having some, it, it, say, if, if the commission says, if we're going to designate this long-term parks and we want it to be a parkland, what does that look like? Then you can start getting that kind of, but I think there has to be some initial structure on what is going to be identified in that piece first, um, that, you know, is, is, is within the, uh, the, within the financial plan, right?
Just throw it out there.
No, 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 I, I get it, that's a hundred percent. Yes, ma'am?
But I also hear you all asking for input in order to make that first.
Correct.
Decision.
Yeah, yeah.
So, back to my original point, how do people, how's the best way for people to get input to you if it's not going to be through a committee, which, you know, doesn't have to be a board or committee, is maybe a great idea? If we're going to simply rely on people looking at whether or not the board of commissioners is discussing this at one of their meetings?
So, can I, can I give you a little bit, uh, let me, let me tell you what I have found works really well. You called the board of commissioners' office and you asked to speak through their commissioner for me. And, and you stayed, and you had whatever issue you, you have. And if you, if you, hopefully, you have not been watching the commissioners' meetings for the last five years.
Not the last five years, but a while.
Okay, well, I know you can't get that tongue back. But you'll notice, you'll notice that there are just a few people that come to every meeting. And they pound on their particular individual issue, right? All the time. And so, you'll, you'll, you'll find that, that things have kind of skewed toward responding to those issues, because those are the only people that come. So, the same, you can, you can achieve the same thing by calling, because trust me, those people are calling every day, five to ten times a day. So, if you call once a month, that'd be great.
Calling for?
Call and ask a question. Like, if you want to call and ask about this, if, if this is your issue, you shouldn't, you don't need to worry about stuff in other parts of the county. If this is your issue that you're worried about, then call about this. If not, then get on the mailing list and be a part of every single issue and look at every agenda. You can do that. That's, that's the most, if you want to do that, you can do that. But if you have one pet issue, you can call us and say, hey, what are you people doing about this? And we'll answer.
Or email, you can email us, write a letter.
Yeah.
Get letters.
I think we actually called something like thirty-three times.
I called a lot.
And never got an answer.
I wanted to talk to you about that, because I never, I never.
Yeah, I, I called for, I called maybe half a dozen times and Brad was the first one to call me back. It was on a Saturday from his personal cell. Thank you for that, by the way. Um, but I did leave several messages.
I think you, I think you previously talked to Rubia, hadn't you?
I had talked to Rubia.
Okay, so you did get, you did talk to Rubia, she gave you the information.
Yeah, and then she forwarded me to different voicemails, because first I asked for Jay Tross and then I got different ones and I left messages. Um, and I never got a call back. Salem also never called me back. I still call them every day. I will call them back every day until they die.
Say, ODF?
Huh?
ODF?
Um, I called ODF, I called all of the acronyms. I called C N A, I called the logger outfit, I called everybody, because it's, that's like she was saying, it's my backyard. So, I called everybody. When the roads first got plunged in, I had no idea who to talk to. Planning ran me, I know you guys aren't planning, but planning ran me around for probably three or four weeks. They're like, well, we don't regulate logging. I'm like, it's county property. three or four weeks. They're like, well, we don't regulate logging. I'm like, it's county property, okay? Can I just go and log the county property if I want to? Well, we don't regulate logging. Okay, cool. So...
I was interested, just planning negotiated that contract.
Yeah, they had no, well, according to them, they had no idea. And they don't regulate logging. That's all they would tell me. So, yes, I called many times.
So, do you have any other questions?
I just have one question. It was, it's currently zoned forest and grazing, right? That's where the ground is zoned up there.
I think so, yeah. Yes, I think so.
Forest and grazing, right?
I, I'm not sure, but I would assume so.
I mean, what was done to it is what is meant to do.
Correct.
Due to resource grab.
Right.
And so, what's meant to happen is for it to be replanted, right?
Correct.
Not a trailer park, not a...
Right.
Not to be replanted, yep. What happens on resource grab.
Right, and that was the recommendation of the, of the, the original recommendation of the plan back in 2018. That it, that it'd be, that it'd be used for, I don't, it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, recommended to be logged. It was recommended to be held in the same and used for recreation.
Right. I'm just checking, I'm just making sure I knew all of it.
Yeah.
Actually, I have three things. I'll try to be quick. In regards to the road department, where you need disposal space, if any of that is shipable, I recently, last few months, learned about people in Landon who were a lady who reclaimed, you know, logged horse with cardboard and mulch. And the horse was eradicated, there's a pollinator garden there now. And, and other people are doing that, so you should just, can't just be doing it professionally as well. So, that was, you know, possibly a, a partial solution for, for, for storage of the debris and also the control of the doors. Second, oh, well, third, actually, no, I'll go back to second. There's a meeting in Langley Library on the 28th of this month. At, at 5:00 to 7:00 about the, um, the county property issue. If there's, the email that I got about it, there was a link to a survey. Contact Langley Library if you have any interest in any of that. And then the second thing, I don't give this very short, 'cause it's, it's, it's a little bit of kind of pointing fingers, but I was, attended some of the meetings back in, whenever it was, 2018, with state parks and, and state lands. And, you know, too, at least, I remember where this trade deal was originally initiated. And it would take months of whatever talks and comments, what I'll put between it, like nine months the next meeting. But, I'm almost 70, so my, my retain, retention of details is not fabulous anymore. But my recollection of what kicked off the very start, and there are people in this room who also attended those meetings, what kicked off a substantial protest was that the county, in their effort to raise money, which I totally sympathize with, we, we had a committee at one time to look at ways to help we spend less or raise more. And, you know, none of the things were, solutions were really all that feasible. But anyway, the county was planning to do something atrocious, development, something that was completely inappropriate for the Forest Lake land. And so, through the rounds of everything that transpired, this trade, my recollection, this trade, that's where it originated. So, I just, I wanted to put that in for the, the record.
I remember something about that, yeah.
Who's next? Yes, sir?
Yeah, just one question, a little off the current subject, but in that contract, did it obligate the contractor to clean up that site after he left?
Yeah.
He had to come back to do it.
It's in progress right now.
Yeah, he'll, he'll do it.
Yes?
Just going back to what Jay said earlier, like, you have all your ideas on one point four. Where do you get these ideas too? Do you, you know, you...
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
Email, call, welcome to...
Okay, I've been quiet, so now I get to talk. I've been quiet because I wanna listen to you. And what I wanna tell you is that when, when my wife and I moved here to Curry County, everything was great. And then I saw some things starting to change and I didn't like it. So, I got on the budget committee. And while I was on the budget committee, I watched decisions being made. And I didn't feel like my voice was being heard. So, I ran for office. And here I am. And I had a mission in why I ran for office. Because I was on the budget committee, I'm, I'm watching what's happening with the funding of our law enforcement, our public safety. And I'm concerned about it. That's my expertise, is public safety. And I'm, I'm, I'm worried that this public safety is going to be in jeopardy because of no money. And I wanna change that, that's why I'm here. And I'm, I'm also here because I felt we weren't being heard. And that's why it's important to move these meetings around to me. It's important to me to change these meeting times. It's important to me that when we have issues specific to a community, we hold those meetings there and listen to the people and do what the people want. And as long as I'm sitting here, we will do that. I will advocate that. And that is, it's, again, why I'm here. It's, it's, it's my priority. So, like Jay said, this, this is not something that, I, I am not going to support a mobile parking. I'm not going to support, uh, the road department using that to store anything. I'm not gonna support that. It's, it's, I think that's the wrong thing to do with that land. And what I am gonna support is what the majority of the community wants to be out there. So, before you leave, I'll give you my cellphone number. You can call me directly. You can email me. You can come and see me anytime. My office is in the bottom of the courthouse. And it's in emergency management. I, I moved over there because I wanna be closer to that. And you can come see me anytime. And if you have a proposal, if you have an idea and you want me to bring that to them, I work for you. So, you can do that. And we can have those discussions. And, and that's, that's one way to do that. So, and I encourage you to do that. And also, it was brought up earlier, there's an election coming up. That's your opportunity to do what I do. This is not a fun job.
Yeah, sorry, your first tweet, I said sentence.
I do refer to this as my sentence. And, and I'm only doing it once. I'm not just, this is not, I, I, I wanna accomplish the, the things that I set out to accomplish. I wanna make sure that we have a safe community. And I'm hopeful that some of the things that we're working on will come to fruition. But, but we'll keep, we'll keep at it. So, after, after this meeting, you want my cellphone number? You want a direct line of communication?
So, if there are no more questions on that, I see one in the back.
It's related to Commissioner Alcorn's fiscal responsibility. Thank you for that. And your interest in public safety and our cybersecurity. I have professional interest in that. I recognize that this decision to sell the timber was not decided by this body. And I'm sensitive to that. As we look forward and we try to solve 21st century issues like public safety and cybersecurity resilience, I would challenge the commission to try to find 21st century funding solutions for that rather than immediate public property. Thank you.
Yeah. And we, and just so you guys know, and thank you for that. Just, just so you know, we, we have solicited outside help for that, to do exactly what you said. And solicit the community with surveys and questions to determine what the community would accept in terms of perhaps a levy or some type of funding. That is in progress now. And, and we're, we're, as that moves forward, we'll start to get that information and that feedback. And we can formulate the plan moving forward. But, but that, that, that is why I'm here. That is, that is exactly why I'm here, to find those solutions.
There was a question on how it was zoned, so I pulled up the GIS interactive. And it shows that it's in the enterprise zone. So, I don't think that's forestry or agriculture. That's, you know, commercial.
Oh, it'd still be, it'd still be forest, right? It'll tell you if you put some of those pines.
I, I did, and it said C1, which is commercial.
Oh, is it commercial?
It is now.
Well...
I think it may have always been commercial. I think it may have always been commercial.
It might have been, since they were planning on a, on a...
Rust stop, yeah.
Well, if we, go ahead, sir.
It was stated that there was no logs or defect. What, what was that defect?
What was the defect in logs? Which is, I mean, if you look at it, as they, as, it went, when Douglas firs grow in non-prime site ground, if you look at the tops of them, you can tell by looking at them that they're, there's, there's, there's stain in them, there's all kinds, there's different rot that's going on. I saw conch in some of them. Just the breed stuff that I was looking at. So, that means the trees, as they grow, they start to, as, as a Douglas fir grows in, in, in kind of not prime ground, like the best place to grow a Douglas fir, I think, is Douglas County. And if you ever wanna see a great Douglas fir, go there. Well, well, if you go, when, when they're growing in, in sand dunes and different places where that, that's not the primary tree, then, um, then you'll see, you'll see that the tops are out of, the tops don't, don't, they don't have a good leader coming up. They, you can see that they grow, um, if they're, yeah, if they're growing not uniformly and, 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 um, you know, in a, in a aggressive manner, then they're, they're mostly kind of dying as they go. And so...
And if it doesn't, if it doesn't have straight grain, right? That's one of the biggest things, straight grain.
Well, that's part of it. But I mean, when you, so, if they're, when you, when you cut, when you, when you cut a tree and then you log it, I mean, and then you, you bucket to, you bucket to length, you, you, every, every one of those things, those actions are a possibility where you expose it to be, to be, um, uh, deducted for scale or, you know, by a scaler. And so, it's, when you take a log to the mill, the scalers, they, they'll take that log and, like, for example, if, if, you know, here in, here in Curry County, we have, we have, we get so much rain that our Douglas firs grow faster than almost anywhere else in the world, in a lot of places. But that's not necessarily good. Because they grow really fast and they got really thick, really thick growth rings, which is not a strong piece of wood. Well, then, and then also, sometimes it gets up, like up here in all this farm ground, you see it, you'll see an old fir tree, they, they look like a carrot. Well, so you cut that log and, and you, you have, if you bucket 36 of it, well, it's six feet wide at the, at the butt end. And it's three feet wide at the, at the end of that log. Well, the mill only pays you for the three-foot end. So, they get all the rest of the wood for free. So, those are all, all those things, there's just a whole, there's a real science to it.
So, whoever, whoever made this deal for the county and then thought it was really a great idea to make a lot of money off of this wood, obviously wasn't a logger, were they?
It would've been great to have a logger. That, yeah, it would've been great to have a logger or a forester. You know, but you gotta pay a forester to come in and look at it. And, you know, a lot of times we wanna save money on, on our experts. And it's almost always worthwhile to get somebody, you know, a good, a good forester can come in and look at, at your standing. You get pretty close to what you're gonna get out of it.
So, was the whole idea, the owner's land, the use was to cut it eventually?
I don't, we, I don't, the, I don't know, I, they, the, the, what, I think what was said was really, the, the real motivation here was to protect the land that the county owned, that again, adjacent to Forest Creek from the county. Because the county was threatening and various, various people who were no longer serving as elected officials were doing things like talking to developers and, and saying it was gonna, this is gonna be the next big thing. And that really scared a lot of people legitimately.
You thought this was a dumb idea because the, the trees aren't really as valuable as...
I think, I think, I think if you wanna, if you wanna protect the land around Forest, it would've been good to trade it for something that would, that wasn't across from high school. There's just, there's a lot of other, there's a lot of other state grounds that you could come up with. And, um, but, but in any rate, it's all water under the bridge, so we have to make the best of what, of what we're doing. And, and there are trees that grow, there are trees that grow better, you know, in this area. I mean, the, the, you know, the closer, in the first 600 feet of elevation around here, one of the best things that grows is the sickus spruce. And I mean, you could hardly kill them. And they, and if you, if they, if they're available to naturally seed, they grow thicker than yours and they'll chill just about anything else. In fact, they'll, they'll, they'll... That's one reason that, that firs that grow up among them always look twisted and bad. Because I don't know what they do, but spruce are horrible neighbors. They figure out how to, how to get, and they're also a tree that grows with this network of, network of, of root system. So that, as opposed to these kind of more individual firs. But if you cut one spruce out of a bunch, the rest of them are probably gonna go when the wind starts to blow. So, it's just, there's just a lot going on out there. And, and so, when you think about how you're gonna replant that, you just wanna be thoughtful about how to do it and talk to, talk to professionals. They know how, you know, they'll, they'll know what goes there. And they'll know what'll grow. So, we should think, think about that.
Yes, sir?
I, I have a, a public safety question for you. I don't know who owns the land out at the airport in the parking areas there for the trailhead for Black Rock.
That's the state park.
Is, is it state park?
Yeah.
There, there is a, a burned-out pickup truck that's been sitting there for almost two months now.
They don't buy it.
And I, I was hoping maybe somebody could, would know what to do with it. It's been tagged twice by the highway patrol. Been there since August 1st. It's about 2015 or so Chevy pickup. Don't know anything more about it, it's been burned out. The folks down the road that you were talking about, they've been in there pulling wiring out and whatnot. But what's happening now is that the bed of that pickup truck is being used as a trash receptacle for people to visit.
Sure.
So, is there anything that the county can do, or at least bring it to the attention of someone or they can? It'd certainly be nice to get that pickup out of there.
Call State Parks.
I, when I, yeah.
Call State Parks.
As far as the public safety goes, I, somebody drove in while I was there, I, I kinda pick up trash down Airport Road, that they, they walked in, or they drove in and they said, is it safe to be here? Because they saw that. I mean, this, these are tourists. Even their locals, I don't know who they were, but they didn't identify who they were. But people are concerned when they drive out there because they see this burned-out pickup.
So, Ashley, this is on the state park, on the state?
Yes.
The state parks, the state parks, they told me that they don't own that.
Yeah, they say that, that's because they don't wanna deal with it. That's what they'll tell you every time. You gotta keep calling them.
And, and Ashley is right. So, that is their jurisdiction. If this were on a county road, would we have changed the way that we're handling issues on county, on a county road? We have changed, completely revamped our code enforcement situation. We are, we have, we actually have a job posted now if any of you are interested, a security resource officer position. And that officer will deal specifically with the camping ordinance that we also have just passed. And we are using our road department to remove those vehicles and take them to the county yard. They're very expensive to get rid of, it's very costly. But we're using all of the resources of the county to pick up those vehicles and move them. We had them up, uh, up Jerry's Flat, we've had them up the Checkto. We, we pulled quite a few of those off of county property already. And we'll continue to do so. And that's, that's our mechanism for that. Because that's unacceptable too. And, and you're absolutely right, that is a public safety issue. It's costly, it's expensive. Which, again, I circle back to that funding issue. You know, that's, that's why we have to change. I, I, I'm here because I wanna make change. We have to change this. We cannot continue down the path that we are going. It's, it will be devastating to, to...
For every dollar that the county gets, six cents goes to the general fund. Six cents for every dollar. Not enough.
Yeah, the rest of it goes to special districts and then six cents comes back to the general fund.
Can we move to the next? This old man's gonna drive back to Oregon tonight sometime. So, the next thing on the agenda is discussion, because it's gonna get sticky here. Because we're gonna talk about the Ford River Transfer Station. Now, we're gonna talk about trash.
So, this item I put on here as well, some of you in the community reached out to me about this as well, so I wanted it on the agenda. CTR owns the property. We own the building. It's currently being used. And I went out there and looked at it. And your complaints are a hundred percent accurate. It is unacceptable. It is not safe. And I know that we also have funding set aside specifically for this. I think that funding is between three seventy-five and four hundred thousand right now. I know there were previous, there's history here as well, whether CTR was gonna continue to leave the facility open. There was a question about that and then what the county's responsibility was. The bottom line is this, if we're going to have, if CTR is going to continue operating that facility, we can't leave it in that condition. We have to change that. It's not, it's not acceptable. It's not safe and, and take action there. So this is an open discussion item as well, so.
So I, I just gotta ask though, Rubia, does CTR own the property or is this county property?
It's a good question. We have to look at that. I have a couple in my head. I don't want to.
I know, I mean, you've got the franchise.
That's all I remember, but I'm not, I'm not positive.
I'm thinking it's county property because we take care of the wells or those, the standbikes and all that.
That's the closed landfill they use to bury out there. We are responsible for that.
But if it was, if it wasn't our property, it would be CTR's responsibility, wouldn't it?
There's a couple parcels.
Pardon me?
There's a couple parcels back there. It's not all one chunk.
But the building is ours.
Yes.
And the building is falling down.
Yeah.
That's, that's the, the biggest discussion point.
So we, we've been talking about this for a couple of years and CTR had just, I talked to Luca a week ago and he said, they have decided not to shut down Port Orford because they need it, um, because of, you know, the garbage picking up. So they have decided not to do, change anything there, which is good. But the kicker and the big problem with all the sites, this one especially, more than Gold Beach and Brookings, is the people that live on Arizona Road go into that dump every night to the tune of between fifteen and twenty trips. So a few years ago when there was a fire issue, CTR put people out there just to check, to make sure there wasn't a fire and they logged. If you go out there and they, they logged on a piece of paper, this is how many people came with flashlights and headlights and go through the garbage. So the old saying, one man's trash is another man's treasure, is especially true at Port Orford Transfer Station. To the point, and so they have redone those fences, they have done all this stuff and they just rip it apart. They're just ripping the shred.
Tents are knocked down?
Ted and I met with our county sheriff not that long ago, cause I asked for a meeting. I said, we gotta, we gotta do something. People can trespass or shouldn't be allowed to trespass onto this property and go through this garbage. And the sheriff didn't show up.
Well, but he did show up the other night and he arrested a couple of people at the, at the Port Orford Transportation. Yeah, I mean, he was, I mean, but the thing is that that could be a full-time job. So I, you know, so my issue is that, that the proposal that we got from CTR was, was a clear span structure that was made of plastic, right?
Rubia, can you help me out on that clear span? Is it plastic or they, they've got one somewhere?
It's like a corrugated, I think it's a plastic mix. I'm not sure what it's made of.
Pretty tough.
What they use for the green, all that kind of stuff.
I think so. I'm, I'm not sure what the.
They say it'll stand up to wind at Port Orford. I, I remain unconvinced. But, um, obviously the building that is there right now is in, is in advanced disrepair. I mean, we could commit all that money to do a new structure. I, I just, I, I remember when they, when they proposed that thing to you and I, John, I was like, I mean, I know it's not very windy in Port Orford, but all you people tell me.
This is what I.
Or windy in Brookings.
Jake, well, I was just gonna say we, we committed to just getting bids and start that process, you know?
We've gotten bids?
Yeah, we've gotten bids, we've gotten some, uh, one of those folks that.
Except we didn't. CTR got it. I, I, let's, let's, let's reach out to some local builders and see if we can get a better, you know, I'll tell you that worked out pretty well with our veterans building.
Here's what I'd like to, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have Ted contact CTR, get a commitment from there that they're gonna continue to do business. Like something in writing, you know, that when we invest this money, they're not gonna pull out six months from now. And then after we have that commitment from them, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have maybe Charles, I'd like to have him come out here and book it and give us a couple of options.
I don't know if Charles would be the right guy necessarily. He's more of a, maybe a contractor.
It's gonna get good really, folks. You don't need to leave that neighborhood that bad.
But yes, having, having, having somebody come out.
Yeah, maybe Ted can assign someone to come out.
I could provide two.
Yeah, give us some options about what we can do there and how we can proceed with it. But, but I, I don't wanna, what I don't want to do is not do anything which we have not explored. So I want to make sure we move that forward.
I can get some bigger contractors to come look at it and then, and kind of scope it and give us their ideas and see what, what they think. And then maybe we can put that, then we'll have enough information we can do in our D. Okay, we'll do that.
Very good. So as if on trash, yes, ma'am?
Well, just circling back, so if this was first dealt with two years ago and we haven't made any further progress of what you've discussed now, what, what is the timeframe you've decided on? Did you get your quotes? I mean, it sounds like this needs to be, you know, fast forwarded. It's about time, so.
Well, the only good thing about that two-year vet fund has grown because that, that, it, it grows exponentially somehow. I don't know how, but it, it got, because if we're up to around almost four hundred thousand, we were at two hundred thousand, right, Rubia, when we started or two fifty or?
So, but this is a safety issue, a liability issue. It's, it far surpasses anything about money at this point. So I, I'm just asking, I can't really hear what the three commissioners are saying. I'm not, with all due respect, not particularly interested in hearing that much from the gentleman on the far right. He's done the bulk of talking this evening. But I would like to hear what the timetable is from the three commissioners of whom we've elected to office.
Well, so I think a lot of it's gonna be dictated on contractor capabilities, right? So the first thing we have to do is, is, is get those bids and then bring that forward and select a bid. Then the contractor's essentially gonna give us the timeline in terms of when that, that can be completed. Now, what I would say is being done in this fiscal year would require we go and do a supplemental budget. And we're, we're slated to do a supplemental in October. So I, I, I don't think that this is outside the scope of being done this fiscal year. They may tell us that weather permitting, this winter will be very difficult to get the job complete. They would need to do it in the spring. But I, I think that gives us a long runway to get all of the necessary bids and information in so that we can, we can select the right contractor to do the job.
So who is primary on this?
There would be the guy at the end.
The one I just said?
He, he, he's the guy.
All right.
He's the guy.
Along with the many other things, right?
Yeah, so the director of operations.
So we'll hear a follow-up how, I mean, you will report at the next commissioner meeting regarding what, what you've made or?
I think you, aren't you asking them to give you direction?
No, I'm asking you now because apparently the baton is being tossed in your direction.
So you are asking me, okay. So how about, how about this? I was gonna say, I'll try to get something back within, give me a month, because I gotta get people out on site, okay?
You gotta have a design.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think it's a little early for that, but I, I think we want to get, I can get people out there and, and get them to give us an idea that we can craft an RFP and then we can, then we can put it out. Cause I know, you probably don't like to hear from me, but I'll tell you this, I know a lot about this kind of stuff because I've been working in this for a long time. So what you do in a lot of cases, in a situation like this, it's a weird piece of construction, you don't ask your commissioner to design it and you don't ask a local, a local architect to design it and you don't ask me to design it. You go out and you find big contractors and you ask them to, you, you write the contract so that they're, so that they are incentivized to come in with the lowest, with the lowest bid. And it's probably something that none of us have ever even thought of, but that's how you do it.
Sir, with all due respect, I'm just asking for an approximate timetable on someone moving forward. And you're saying about a month before we can take the first step.
About a month, I can probably bring something back.
That's perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, go to Moam? Yeah, ready to, this even gets better. Discussion on Bowlin Wind Energy Public Comment. You guys are lucky up here in Port Orford. Not as lucky in Brookings. The board will discuss ongoing proposals for the creation of wind energy facilities off the coast of our county. Moam has opened a public comment window for the proposal and in addition to participating in that, the county intends to incorporate public input in its official response to Bowlin.
So I know it was mentioned before that like, not necessarily gonna be looking at windmills out there in Port Orford. However, you know, this is a strong fishing industry, uh, community and it will most likely affect a lot of that. The scope in which they're wanting to put in these, uh, these windmills, I will tell you right now, these windmills are nine hundred and sixty-seven feet tall with one hundred foot span fans. On the top of these will be red and green lights for planes at night. And you will be able to see a mirror of those lights going off at night when you look at it. Now, the proposed, so here's the thing, here's, give some background. For some people who may or may not know, so, if state waters out to three miles, past the three mile mark is federal waters. They are proposing to do this in the federal waters, from the ten mile mark out to the twenty-two mile mark, I believe is the, the scope in which they're looking at selling off these leased areas, right? And so, um, a, a lot of this will be in the deep water channel, will be right in the middle of the fishing channel. It will create unknown consequences. I want to be straight up front. There has been some of this done on the east coast, but it's not the scope of these, this size of windmill, nor the scope in the amount of windmills that they wish to put out there. This is completely experimental. And, uh, and so you're, this, it is, it is vital that this, you, you do let your voices know. There will be a meeting next week, um, next third, no, next Tuesday, Tuesday? Is that right, Dave?
Tuesday's Gold Beach.
Next Tuesday in Gold Beach, Wednesday in Coos Bay, Thursday in Brookings.
Well, I, I just want to let you know, I, I don't, maybe you're not aware that our port went to the meeting last year and they had some experts, they had some people even from OSU go up there and talk about the fishing industry and they are not going to be in the port. I mean, I'm not saying people shouldn't go. But we have been, they have actually listened to us. They went last year and they went to the local meeting in Coos Bay and we, they have decided to move away from the Port Orford fishing area. Now, how far north and south, I, I can't tell you.
Not very far.
Not far.
Not very far, up north and south. It will be very, very much part of the landscape. And, um, so, um, you know, whether you're for it or against it, this is one of those you definitely want your voice to be, be, be recognized. And, you know, we did have RWS, it's the organization who actually wants to put the windmills out there, who will be collecting the energy and selling it off. And they met with us individually. And, um, you know, I'll just, what I, this is what I, this is, the feedback that I provided was, hey, you know, you're coming here because you see a potential profit. We're here because we love it. So your job now is to convince everybody who loves it that they're gonna gain more than they're gonna lose. And that's a tall order. And so, um, you know, I just left it at that and that's.
Sorry?
I know, I know that ring. T has that ring. So anyways, it, it, it will be vital to share your voice. I've, I've tried to, I've, I've talked to them about, you know, I've shared concerns. But, you know, it, it does make, it does make an impact when it's in mass.
And it, and it.
It worked for us. Seriously, I, it, it, we had to convince the people to, you can't fight it. They, they said, come to the meeting and talk to us. And I think they were surprised that they listened. I'm not saying, you know, how far north and south.
Did they tell you how they're gonna anchor those things?
I, I don't think that was a question. The question is, we didn't want them in our fishing area.
Yeah.
And we showed them what kind of money they were gonna, we were gonna be losing and from, as a community, if we couldn't fish.
And don't you guys have a reserve too, like red fish rocks or something that there's a, there's a.
Yeah.
Lot of ocean that, yeah, is untouchable, like a wilderness area.
Well, the reason, the reason we're talking about this tonight is, the reason it's on the agenda tonight is because we, we need to take an official position as board commissioners on that. And I can tell you that it may not be going off of your ocean right here, but you will feel the economic effects from that for sure. And it's not gonna be good. And I can tell you that the investigation I've done into this, I've been to all the meetings, I met with the people that are coming here to put it in, I talked to them. I can tell you that everything is uncertain, unknown, does not add value. And the people here don't want it. And I don't, because the people don't want it, I'm not gonna support it.
No, but we need to be completely transparent. We may not support it, but we don't really have a say. This is in federal waters.
Right.
Where we do have a say is when they have to bring that power to shore and then take it south. That's where we have a say, right?
It's not power for us.
It's not, it's not power for us.
It's like a pipeline.
We already get the cheapest power in the continental U.S. from Colombia.
Yeah, and somehow that water isn't green. So it kind of blows my mind. So anyways, um, it's not green energy out of the, anyways, I, I digress. So, um, but that's where we do have a say is when that comes to shore, right? So just because we may oppose it doesn't mean that it won't move forward. They have billions invested to go forward with this. And, you know, power collection is, it is the big industry, right? It is a big industry. So, um, what we have to make sure is that if it is decided to move forward and impact all of those things, that the economic impacts to our county are offset by those companies at a, at a, at a substantial measure, not just a one for one. Because we're not losing just a one for one. You can't put a value on our sunset. You can't put a value on our view sheds. You can't, right? You can put value on the impacts on the fishing industry and, and, and try to recruit that direct cost. But some of the things, there is no, there, there, it's, there, it's invaluable. So, um, those are the things that I think are.
Are there mock-up images that we can see of this?
Yes. I think.
Electric has got a really good, yeah, they, they just shows this.
It, it basically, a thousand-foot structure at ten miles looks pretty close. It, I mean, it doesn't look far, it doesn't look so so far.
Well, you get a couple of big storms, it'll be a lot closer.
It's true.
Well, I got it.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I live in a couple of different states and windmill farms are really popular. And I was married, well, with the same person for forty-two years and he was an electrical design engineer. And we went to a lot of meetings together and it's not the best way to produce electricity, one. And two, have you seen some of the farms that have been up for a while? They're horrid. Some of the blades are missing. I'd say twenty-five or thirty percent of the ruly birds don't work anymore. It's really pathetic. If you look at the landscape of some of Nevada and especially Palm Springs area and stuff like that, it is hideous and Arizona's getting close to the same. Within about seven to fifteen years after they're built, they aren't taken care of through that time maintenance. It's usually about the first three years. And then, and then they just go to poop.
Well, a lot of years ago, Bonneville did a study in Port Orford and it's actually too windy. Port Orford is too windy. And I don't know if you've ever noticed, I've got kids in Texas and we drive right by these wind farms. If it's too windy, they shut them down.
Near Amarillo?
Yeah. Well, no, it's actually.
Hundreds and hundreds of miles.
I love it. So anyways, if it's too windy.
So, anyways, if it's too windy, so you just wonder, this makes no sense. Anyway, it's like putting up solar panels in, on the coast, it doesn't, not makes a, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Yep.
You gentlemen are here looking to hear from your constituents and as one of your constituents, I would like to say that I do not love the idea of thousand-foot tall windmills in the federal waters off Curry County.
I have a vote.
Yeah.
However, should it cut to pass, that there's nothing you can do to prevent it, I trust that you three will do everything in your power to make it profitable for the county to hopefully correct some of our budget problems.
And that's, and that is exactly what you said is, is, is how I want to craft some language in our official voice that we can submit.
So, so we could take an official stance somewhere along the lines of summing up kind of what you just said is, the Curry County Board of Commissioners does not support the, the implementation, building, or execution of windmill, wind-powered energy collectors in our federal waters. However, should that project move forward, that we will be determined and dedicated to ensure that the citizens of Curry are compensated justly for such, for such development.
We have time to prepare the laws ahead of time on how you tax that, right?
We will, there's a, there's a runway, it's about a ten-year runway. They're at the beginning of the collection of information stage and they've sold off some of those leases out there. But, this, this is, this, the runway is long and we have, we do have time. But it is important, while they're doing the public input portion, that we do have an official stance.
Are public comments open for the V O E M period right now?
Right now.
Okay, I encourage everybody to get online and to actually write in, into that public comment pool because they will have to read all of them and if we can bog it down, it will at the very least, yeah, be on record.
Yeah, it's, it's, okay. Comment window is open.
Thank you.
Do you know how long it's open for?
I don't have that figured.
Sixty days.
I think it's doubled it for this.
Doubled it for this.
Yeah, they're doing it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, for those who don't know me, I'm David Barnes, I'm the county treasurer. I've been following this for fifteen to twenty years now, wind power offshore. I come from the east coast and growing up, there was, I, every now and then, there was, you'd read about a whale washing up on the beach. In the last two years, there's been thirty washed up on beaches in New Jersey and New York. It's, it began once they started doing the sonar testing for the offshore wind. If you read the old Navy sonar studies from a long time ago, they'll tell you, every, every piece of marine life leaves when you get the low vibr, the low frequency vibrations in the water. I've spoken to people who are involved in this project out here and the Port Orford call area was originally put on the map as a giveaway, so that they could look like nice guys.
Oh, really?
They knew that there was no way to get the power from there to shore without massively disturbing the reserve area. So, they put it on the map anyway, they said, we're going to sell this one too. You guys stood up and said, no, don't do it, and they said, okay, and then they looked like nice guys. But, that's not the way it really works out. As Brad said, I've been working and talking to people for a long time about it. If they are going to force this on us, we need a voice at the table to get some revenue off from it. We, we have thousands upon thousands of acres of federally owned land to the east of us. As a county, we used to get something called PIL, Payment in Lieu of Taxes, for all the federal land out there. What they're going to do is destroy our fisheries out here, so what I'd like to propose is PIL, Payment in Lieu of Fish. And, you know, we get something for it, out of this. If they're going to do it, we can't stop it, but we need to make sure that, as Brad said, that we are compensated for it. Because it will destroy life between Curry and, and Brookings where they do it. You will lose fisheries, you will lose whales, you will lose the main drivers of our, of our current life here in this county. So, you know, I, as you did, I encourage everybody, make your voice heard, go out to the meetings, do what you can, write letters, whatever we can do to stop it, it's still, it's still at its infancy stage and we're still many years out from construction. But if we're lax now, we don't have a voice at the table anymore, so...
I just read that, that Massachusetts project, I think, even though it doesn't hurt whales, they have a, it's a little take for right whales.
Yes.
Yeah, so they're losing right whales right, right and left.
That's something that you should, that's another thing that they haven't spoken about here is what's called take permitting. Is that they are allowed to kill X number of marine life going forward every year. Right whale's an endangered species, but they got a, they got a take permit to kill so many of them every year. Also, the companies that are doing this back east right now, there's three projects going off in the state of New Jersey. Two, one of them has said, we're going to bail out unless you give, unless you give us an additional five billion dollars of state money or whatever the number was. It's not financially feasible, these are anchored, these are, these are in, in ocean floor windmills. They are not the floating ones we're talking about out here. And it's just, it's really proving to be, the people who started these projects back east are all foreign companies and they're all going in and saying, we need more government subsidy because we can't do this. And if you don't give it to us, we're out of here. So, you know, it's, the time to fight is now. It's, as was talked about earlier, you don't keep throwing money at a bad idea. And, you know, we need to stand up and really convince people that it's a bad idea.
Three.
So, that, did we take the language, the rough language that Jay had, Ted, and craft some type of, uh...
Yes.
Document that will reflect that, we can take a look at it and further define it and then prepare us in that.
Three.
I had a look at the people from Maluka, I use, where they try to bring a cruise ship in. Where they just, well, with their shotguns on their, on their, sort of, probably solved.
Yeah. All right, yes.
I just wanted to say, there was a really wonderful presentation prepared by Anne Malice of Camiupi Society and Mike Redo from South Slough, where they really analyzed it in terms of its inefficiency.
Yeah, I was there.
Good, so that, I think that you could access some of that information.
That was good, that was a good presentation.
Yes.
Well, when your local co-op doesn't want any part of it, you know something's wrong. It speaks to high heaven. With that, I think we're going to move on to update the animal fire some more and I'm going to, Jay left something in there, I'm going to go grab. No, I'm going to go beat something.
All right. So, I know everybody's tired of fire updates, I know I am, for sure. You guys are probably, we've talked about this quite a bit. So, Jay, I've got one of these for you and John, it's got all the most current maps and all the fire stats in there. If you don't have a map, I left some on the table there, that's the same map that we have the most current map. Today was a really active day, very, the fire was, a lot of energy, it was very dynamic, a lot of wind up on the fire. The ridges were probably thirty miles an hour winds. So, I, I know that the fire size will be bigger, it's going to be over fifteen tomorrow, I'm sure. But, when I left to come to this meeting, I called the sheriff, he had just landed, he had gone up in a plane to look at it. There was a lot of energy in the fire, but the lines were holding, so that was a good thing. We had, there were a couple spots on the south, on the south and east side where the fire had jumped, but they were able to get around it and get a, get a handle on it, so, so that was good. You know, this fire impacts the whole county because the power lines went through there. And it's encroached on, the south county's out of power, central county's out of power. One-on-ones cut off, so the crews are cut off again, we have to deal with those problems. And then, of course, we have one ninety-nine too, right? So, that's intermittent test right now. So, we're, we're, we're planning around all of that stuff, but the good thing is, we have rain coming.
Yeah.
We have, and Monday, Monday's looking really good right now, so we're, we're, we're very hopeful. In this uptake tonight, a couple of the things, I just, you guys know that I, I've had all these meetings and, and on the phone with these guys repeatedly throughout the day. We, we have gotten a lot of resources on this, we're right around, just under, well, just under a thousand fire personnel right now. This team has been a, the communication has been really good. And everything I've asked for, oh, one other thing, one of the things we were able to do was, we reached out to Josephine County and they have a GIS guy there, his name is Bob Noyes, and he's a wizard with maps. And he was able to get our emergency management map, he was able to spin that up so it's interactive now. And so, we can get on the website, we can put in your address and then it'll show you exactly where you are in your evacuation zone and it'll give you the feedback and information you need. So, he did that, he self-initiated that and was able to put that together. I want to send a letter of recognition to the board commissioners in Josephine County, Dean, and just recognize that he, he went above and beyond to do that. And, and send that over and let the commissioners know the good work he did. So, if you guys don't mind signing this, I'll, I'll, I'll get that sent out to them. It's been a long couple of weeks, hasn't it? I've been in from that. I am so looking forward to this, Frank. I can't tell you, this, this is the one thing that's really keeping me up at night, is, is how unpredictable it is. So, I think, I think if we get through, if we get through the next probably twenty-four hours, we're going to be looking really good, we're going to be looking really good. I haven't gotten, this phone has not gone off, so that's a good sign.
Except they didn't like the way those fire people left.
Yeah. That's local, maybe. Yeah.
So, but the fact that they haven't called us, it means those lines are still holding now, so we're good. But please, if you, if you don't want to take a few minutes to go through this and, and just review that information, I'll get this sent out to Joe County and recognize this, this guy for the good work that he did.
Brad, you haven't heard any differences in the evacuation line, I, I have...
Hasn't changed.
Okay, I, I heard that they...
No change.
Okay, good.
Nope, no change.
How far are you?
If, if we...
I'm almost there.
Yeah, okay.
If we have a, if we have a change, we're going to push that stuff out on social media. If we have a significant movement, I'm going to come on there and do, do another one of my videos and make sure that message gets out and you're going to be able to find it right away.
I was notified just about the sprinklers and it was like, thank you, they're, they're great.
Yeah.
It's on social media, I just wanted to point out, so many people...
Are not on it, right, you're not, some people are not on it.
So, Everbridge hasn't coordinated with you, so I have your cell already from that and I talked to you.
Did you, did you talk to Ashley, did she get that worked out for you?
I don't know, she took my name and, and address and said she checked to see if I was in the system.
So, regarding that, I, I met with our IT guy today, so we revamped that whole thing too, right? So, we have our own IT guy now. And I met with him today and we have to create a, we have to create a false email so that we can, you can access Everbridge via email through that email. So, he, he's aware of that, Ashley was involved in the conversation today and we should have that, hopefully we'll have that result tomorrow. So, if, for people that just have the email, that'll, that will be a, if you, if you just have a hardline phone, we'll be able to do that. So...
I have cell phone, I just don't do social media.
Yeah, now the cell phone should, that we should be able to connect the cell phone through without a problem. Any questions about the fire? You guys should be pretty well informed by now and that's good, that's good.
How's the smoke down in Brookings?
Uh, you know...
Gold Beach is worse.
Yeah.
Brookings is pretty smoky.
Yeah, two, two days ago was pretty, it was like five in the morning and I was outside and it was pretty, you, you definitely knew there was a fire. You know, check Kobar Fire, that was like totally different, that was, you know...
Couldn't see the sun.
Couldn't see, yeah, I know, it was completely dark and that was really horrific. But you can, you definitely know, you know, sometimes I don't know, Smith River Conflict Fire is still going on too, so sometimes you don't know which way it's going. Gold Beach has been, you know, it's, it's weird, it's like it's been pretty good and then two days ago it was horrible. Just, it's all wind driven and that's the thing, I don't know if you guys follow the, follow the briefings on the fire, when I go to the briefing in the morning, it's kind of, kind of the same message. You'll, you'll hear them talk about the, the north wind and then they'll talk about the south wind and then they'll talk about the east wind and then they'll talk about how it's going to come back around and be a north wind and it's like, you know, this is, this is the geographical area we live. And don't like the weather, drive ten minutes. So, fingers crossed, we're going to get this fire out and we'll get a little bit of time back. That's the idea, that's the idea.
Alrighty, so elective official comments, I think are only other elective official left, right? Dave, so next up is commissioner updates and Brad, you're up.
Couple things, I'll speak quickly. Let's see, code enforcement, we revamped that whole thing, as if everybody, well, maybe you don't know, but we revamped that whole thing. We have a CRO, Resource Officer position that's been posted. We're looking for the right person in that job. Hopefully, we're going to get some good applicants, we're, we're definitely marketing that job outside the area. We're trying to pull somebody in. That's going to be a really impactful position to the community and we're, we're looking to fill that with the right person. I had, then we talked with Ted, the RFP on the animal control is almost ready to be put out and we're going to separate that animal control piece as well. And hopefully, we can have that resolved relatively soon and then, depending on how the RFP turns out, we'll get that person trained and provide a much more effective service at a lower cost, is the idea behind that. And that's the whole thing we're trying to do with code enforcement as we've revamped it. And then, of course, the building side of code enforcement, we, I talked to RDI today and that job specification should be done and we should be posting that soon. So, if anybody's interested in that code enforcement position, that should be posted soon. Once that's done, then the code enforcement piece will be complete and we'll be back to providing, again, a more efficient service at a lower cost. So, I, I really hope that we can have that done by the end of October, I think it's, I think it's possible to do that. Whether we fill the position, that's another thing, because I'm not going to settle for the wrong person. And it's really important, you're the right person. I'm going to say thanks to those firefighters, man, they've done amazing job. CFA, they are property lifesavers for sure, those guys are amazing. And then, the Great Basin Incident, managed with T4, that's the folks I've been dealing with most recently. The other thing I want everybody in the room to really understand is, you, you're hearing us talk about these new positions and you're hearing us talk about hiring people and it, that can be really misleading. What we've really done is cut positions, we've cut enough positions that has allowed us to restructure and the people we're hiring are in that restructured model and the purpose behind that is to save money and be more efficient. So, when you hear that, just understand that, that that's how this works. And, and I said, we're, we're facing that financial deficit, we're exploring what the options will be to, to, to figure it out and this is the first step, is making sure that we shrink this down as much as we can and being as efficient as we can. And that's the purpose behind it and that's, that's all I have tonight.
All right, thanks Brad. I have, I'm next, so I'll just say, thank you all for coming out tonight, it's just, it's always a pleasure. This is, you know, I called Port Orford my second home for thirty years. It's always a pleasure to come up here and see you folks. I want to say thank you to all of Curry County, the Herzog family suffered a loss on Labor Day and my son is in heaven now and there's just been tons of outpouring of condolences and prayers and thoughts and so, like, and, and, you know, you guys might, since I am a Brookings guy, you might not have heard, but... And Matt, even today, is, you know, he said he would put it in the Port Orford paper next week, so just thank you all of Curry County. It's not, not just you folks, but I think this will be on a video or something, right? Natasha and people over here, anyway. and people will hear it anyway. And then, we, speaking of positions, we have a director of finance position open, which is a biggie, and so if you know anybody, and I was talking to John Huddle today, and I think Fort Orbert is looking for a, so can't really be better. Anyway, we need to fill these positions, it's a, our finance department is shrinking to the scary, it's getting too, too thin, so that's all I have, thank you folks for coming, and Jay, you're next.
So, yes, thank you all, this is the most well-attended meeting we've had, one of the most productive dialogue...
Oh, this is what feels right.
...that we've had, so this, this was, I think, a good template model. So, I went to the District Four AOC meeting, Monday, no, it was, yes, Monday, but one of the things I walked out with, I wanna just inform you guys and everyone in here, that will it be impacted, will be impacted by this, is, so initially, Senate Bill 762, after the Labor Day fires of 2020, created, drafted this, this, the Senate Bill to create a, this was a risk, wildland risk map, okay? Many of you may be familiar with this. There was a lot of pushback after this initial map came out, which prompted Senate Bill 80, and they changed it from a risk map to a hazard map, and they adjusted the colors to be less drastic.
Will my insurance go back?
Marketing.
Yes, so, I'm glad you brought that up. So, here's how it will impact everyone here. So, you know, it's interesting, they've listed, it's easier to see on this one, it's the same map, it's just this one's a little more muted than that one. So, the brown is urban, wildland or urban interface, and it's basically everywhere anyone lives in Curry County, and so the red is extreme, yellow is moderate, right, there is no blue unless you live in the ocean. So, it's, what happens, as you had mentioned, is because we live in this area, what the potentials are, well, the first ramifications are, there will be, most likely, zoning codes coming down that will impact what you have to do to be able to build in an extreme area or moderate area, meaning what you would have to do to your property before you begin to build. If it was deemed that you could, I guess, there's that potential, that's not a real thing, that's just a potential thing. Then, on top of that, there will be, most likely, building codes that follow this that will only allow you to build the certain materials moving forward, so hardened stuff to forest fires. So, and then, the thing, so Senate Bill 80, Senate Bill 80, yes, had written in there that this will not be able to be used by insurance companies to increase your insurance premiums.
Sure.
And then, in the next breath, they stated, "Insurance companies are risk management companies." So, I said, "So, you created a statewide risk management tool that you expect the risk managers not to use?" Of course they won't. They'll say, "Yeah, we didn't use your map, we created a new map, but it's really similar to your map." So, the potential is, is very much is, what the potential is, is to make it more, more expensive, more expensive for additional housing, more expensive for your improvements to your housing, more expensive for your insurance for your property. So, you know, my, my, I was just sort of sharing my statements to the state, they were there, all the state officials were there, you know, my statement was, "Hey, this looks counterproductive, I'm giving you my gut reaction, in one hand, you're telling us that we have a housing crisis, and in this hand, you're telling us it's gonna be harder to build." And I said, "If," I said, "Private ownership, whether it's private timber companies or private landowners, private homeowners, are generally good stewards of their lands. Our biggest violators of stewardship is our state federal landowners, and if they are held, 70-some percent of our land is federal, if they are held to the standard that a private owner would be in terms of brush clearing, limbing, trimming, then I think this would make it more habitable in these areas, as opposed to less habitable. But to say that the people who own this are immune, because everybody here has to pay for where all of these fires originate, the risk that that causes to the homeowner is now being passed on, and so, I think it's one of those things where we need to make, again, our voice heard. We, all of southwest Oregon looks just like this, so we're not alone, and, and there's other areas of Oregon that are really, they're blue, it's pretty wild, like the Willamette Valley. So, it...
What's nice, though?
Yeah, so, you know, it's one of those things, the other piece that I forgot to bring up, that a citizen actually talked to me about, so I emailed them, was that this map is not taking in account for our marine layer, which is a tremendous asset in fireproofing our areas. So, something that, I just wanted to make sure, this is, this is something that will directly impact everybody in this room, and it's important.
And we need to join the voices of the other county commissioners that are...
Yeah.
...advocating against...
So, let's...
Thanks, Jay.
Sorry, I think it's, just speak to that quick. Preemptively, OSFM does have grants available for homeowners that are gonna be impacted by that, so if you go to their website, you can apply for those grants preemptively to try to mitigate any of the issues that they would give your home, not fire safety.
Thanks.
I think it's up to like 1,500, something of that nature, 1,500 dollars.
I think so, yeah.
And you can even get it retroactively actively if you've already built.
I thought it was 2,500, but it could be 1500.
Yeah, it might be, I...
Yeah, and it's, it goes as far as like brush clearing and planting grass and, you know, changing the shingle on the side of your house, you know, up to that amount.
Yeah.
Not a lot, but some.
Very good. No executive decision?
Yeah.
So...
Or you can sit around and...
Question, ma'am?
Well, just a statement, it doesn't have anything to do with this, but I just wanted to say thanks to you guys, and also thanks to the library and to these rooms for allowing us to have this space, which I believe is a special district. And I do not believe they received...
Yeah.
Well, so the thing is, the county, the county collects all those taxes for, and I think the message that they were trying to get across is, back in the old days, all of these things were funded by, by counties.
Not anymore.
No, not for a long time.
By taxes.
I'm saying, I'm saying, long, long ago, like, for example, Jackson County Library, I remember probably about 10 years ago, Jackson County closed its library because they, they said, "We can't afford it." Well, and I was like, "What do you mean? What is that, what does Jackson County have to do with this library? Because we've always, always, all had special district libraries." So, that's, is, this, when, when we were funded by timber dollars, they were, everybody kinda got their own, they went up and did their own thing, and the county, like, for example, I mean, right now, if that was the case, and we're, and if we didn't have all these special districts, and the county was funding the library, but they couldn't fund, they couldn't fund public safety, then it would be more likely they would close the library to fund public safety, which is why it's nice that it's a special district.
I guess it's a good thing they're not funding this library.
Well, I think, that's what I'm saying.
It would be getting close. It was voted in by the people who wanted the library, and it's a special district. I don't believe they come out of the county, I don't think so.
That's correct. It doesn't, all three of your fire departments are also special districts. What they're saying is, we have a lot of special districts which take most of our county tax dollars, which is why they don't...
I don't think they were ever county tax.
No, they are, when, when you pay your taxes, you pay county taxes, and each one is, is some, you know, each special district is, is broken out there, but it's all, when you get your tax bill, it's from the county tax accessory, they collect the taxes.
I think the point is, is when you pay that tax bill, 6% of that money that you're paying in taxes goes to, actually to the county, the rest goes to your special districts or your city, if you live in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Speaking of taxes, thank you for listening to the taxpayers, 'cause I feel, you know, I'm noticing a theme, this is just an observation tonight, that North County has historically felt like we're being held hostage by South County, and it's because we're poor and we're low population. And Curry County feels held hostage by Salem, poor, low population, Oregon, held hostage by the federal government, poor, low population, and the federal government is held hostage by corporate interests and big money. So, you guys coming here is, just as a summary there.
I like your summary.
This is a dynamic, this is a power dynamic here, and I feel you guys coming and listening to taxpayers is breaking that, that toxic chain of shut up, you're poor, you're low population, you do what you say. I mean, we, we, you know, especially the young people here, whoever's left, we work. Our work, our labor pays your salaries. We are not on pensions, we are not on fixed income, we work our asses off, and our money goes to your salaries, so thank you for listening, and, and breaking that toxic cycle of shut up, you know, and do, and do what you want, because we're behold of the corporate interests or outside money, and it's all about the dollar, right? Because as we're saying with the wind farm, if you just change the dollar all day, that, that's a scorched earth policy, and it doesn't benefit anyone, especially none of the people who will be inheriting this land in the next several decades, so...
Well, just to your point, and just to echo it, and I'm not sure if everybody may have caught it at the beginning, when Brad was talking about this meeting, but also that we're looking at transitioning our normal meetings to the evenings, so that everybody can attend, and you can make it after work. If we, you know, we make these meetings at 6 o'clock at night, whether it's in Gold Beach or here, the work, now you have people who are working at 10 a.m.
Yeah, it's, it's hard, and I would love to see more outreach to the younger folks, the, the workers, the laborers, the people who clock in and clock out, and the families, you know?
Yeah.
Those folks, I think, matter quite a bit, and often aren't, can't, you know, retire and join, you know, politics, "Oh, we gotta make money." I know you guys don't get paid a lot, and it's, it's really a volunteer service in many ways, and I respect that, but for those who have to work and pay mortgages, you know, time is precious, so thank you for coming to meet us where we are.
Yeah, from now on, we'll be doing our meetings, one on a Thursday and one on a Wednesday, twice during the month, so two different days during, you know, weekdays, but they will be at night, they will be...
Thank you for driving, and I was thinking for a long time.
I can drive, Brookings with my eyes closed.
Funny people doing that.
All right, with that, if everybody has talked enough, we're gonna adjourn this meeting, thank you for coming again.
Thank you for coming.